Okay, we're now recording.
I'll call the February eighth, two thousand twenty-two town Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission to order. Start off with, uh, meeting minutes from our January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, I have a second. Commissioner Harrison, second. Hey, was, um, anything about the minutes?
Uh, there were a couple of small typos and Josephine fixed them, so I believe they're perfect.
Excuse me?
Yeah, um, there were a couple of tiny typos and Josephine fixed them.
Oh, I see, thank you. Commissioner Harrison, anything else to add? You're on mute, but I think I saw a shake of the head, no. That's what I saw, okay. Any other, any other commissioners or can we vote? Hearing none, all in favor to approve the minutes, say aye or raise your hand. One, two, three, count seven, I believe, uh, any opposed? Extentions? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, item B under Bills and Communications, twenty-seven eighty Redding Road, request of Attorney John Fallon for a ninety-day extension for recording final subdivision. Sir Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went for the record. There was a two-lot subdivision approved by the commission for this property, uh, on August tenth of twenty twenty-one. The commission approved a first ninety-day extension, uh, on October the twelfth. Uh, the original applicant was the estate of John Russell. Uh, this second ninety-day extension will allow time for the new buyer of the property to file the required bond in the open space payment agreement. There was a, uh, an open space fee as part of the approval of this of a little over fifty-two thousand dollars. And this final extension is available, uh, this is the last extension available and would run through May the seventh of this year. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
An outright extension?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Commissioner Levy?
Move to approve.
Yep. Commissioner Braun, seconds. As we said, as of right, Commissioner Levy, anything to add?
Not a thing.
Nope.
Have a question?
Go ahead.
Um, has the, the map, the subdivision map been submitted or is that also being extended? I don't recall seeing one, but I might not, not be remembering. We're supposed to see the final subdivision map.
If, if, um, if I may, Jim Went, for the record, the final subdivision map has yet to be recorded. That's what the extension is for, is for them to record it. Um, we generally don't distribute that to the entire commission. A Mylar has to be submitted, which is the same map, um, that you had, have already approved. In this case, I don't believe there are any, um,
Okay.
Changes to the map that are necessary, but it does require the chairman or the secretary's signature before it can get recorded on the land records.
So this extension is for the filing of the bond and the submitting of the map for a final approval, after which it will then be recorded in the town clerk's office?
Correct, it, it's technically an extension to record the map. The filing of the bond and the payment agreement are prerequisites for us allowing the map to be recorded.
And do we know why the bond hasn't been filed yet?
Well, I think in this case, since it was an estate that was the original applicant and now they have a buyer, that that will probably happen in the near term. Um, you know, but the statute does anticipate that this could take, you know, upwards of two hundred and seventy days to, to, to get all the paperwork in order. So it's not an unusual circumstance and I don't anticipate that there'd be any changes to the map.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, and again, I, 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 thank you, I was not here when you guys did this, I, um, you know, I was elected in November. But this five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred value for the land, it seems rather low in today's market. When was that established? I mean, it feels like we should be getting more for the, I mean, just, just seems really low in today's market.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pre-subdivision value of the land component before the lot is subdivided, not after. Um, so that is determined by, uh, the tax assessor and it was done in, at the time that this matter was heard in August of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Move to a vote, all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Looks like seven, but any, uh, up, any, um, opposed? Commissioner Ford, I assume you are in favor, correct? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. Moving on to new applications for recommendation to public hearing. Two dash six Beacon Square zoning compliance application of Beacon Square Properties LLC, pertaining to a twenty-six unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. Mr. Went?
Uh, yes, this is an application that should be familiar with, to the commission. We had a hearing on this and it was recently withdrawn. Uh, they have made an adjustment to the site plan to accommodate the ability of a fire truck to turn around. We will have, uh, that in a, in a new, uh, report from the fire department, but it's, it's new in the mix. So we wanted to give the public as much notice as possible that we've received the revised application and will be the subject of a, uh, near future public hearing.
Thank you, may I have a motion? Commissioner Levy?
Uh, move to public hearing.
May I have a second? Commissioner Francis, seconds. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Six, seven, but any opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously. Uh, next item, eight fifty-five Stillson Road, subs- subdivision application of eight fifty-five Stillson Road LLC for two lots in an A-zone.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Went again, this is, uh, property at eight fifty-five Stillson Road, which is kind of diagonally across the street from Osborne Hill School. This is a subdivision, not a re-subdivision, so technically, um, the commission, uh, has the discretion to approve this without a hearing, but it has been the long practice of this commission to hold public hearings for subdivision applications. That is why it's placed on the agenda to recommend to public hearing.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Commissioner Berman? Move to public hearing. Second, Commissioner Ford? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Let's see.
I had one question, sorry.
No, sure, I'm sorry, Commissioner Francis.
I didn't feel my hand properly, um, just, I just wanted to know what is on this land currently?
There is presently one existing house and a detached garage. They're looking to divide it into two lots.
Okay, and, um, does, will the subdivision meet our required zoning requirements for coverage?
Yes, uh, each of the houses will have to do that. These lots are, um, each fairly generously over the minimum lot size, uh, in the, in the, in the A-zone. So if you're coming up just at ballpark, if, if you're traveling north on North Benson and you get to the light at Stillson, where North Benson bears off and Stillson bears around to the right, there's a kind of house on that curve that's got a home daycare facility. It's the next, the next, that's an old farmhouse, uh, and I believe it has a for-sale sign on it, uh, out in the property now. That's just to give you geographically where we are, but we will share the plans with you, obviously, um, with all those details. But in the short answer to your question is yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Francis, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't wave it right, not your fault.
Any other questions or discussion from any other commissioners? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Think I see seven again, but any opposed? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. And next item, sixteen zero nine Fairfield Beach Road, special exception and coastal site plan application of Gregory Sargent pertaining to the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this, um, this application is just like it says, an existing house to be demolished and reconstructed. The reason it's a special exception application is there is a provision in the Beast, Beach District Regulations. It recognizes that there are non-conforming conditions down there in which there are properties that have more than one dwelling on them, which is, uh, a non-conformity. So the Beach District Regulations provide for a special exception application opportunity for an applicant to, um, demolish an existing home, uh, and make a case to you for special exception rather than seek a variance for, um, replacing a non-conforming structure. So that's what's, that's why this is a setup for public hearing as a special exception, because this existing property already has two dwellings, one of which was replaced some years ago, and this is an older home that they're looking to replace now. It does require a special exception and therefore requires a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Went. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Levy? Move to public hearing, second by Commissioner Francis. Any questions or discussions?
None.
All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Think I see seven again, but any opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to old business. Zoning regulations amendment, application of fourteen zero one King LLC to amend section thirteen point fourteen point two of the zoning regulations, permitted uses in the transit-oriented development park to allow dog daycare uses to include overnight boarding, daycare grooming and training. Mr. Went?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, this proposal for, um, again, the applicant seeks to amend section thirteen point fourteen, as you just described, which are permitted uses in the transit-oriented development park to allow, uh, to allow dog daycare uses to include pet services such as overnight boarding, daycare grooming and training. This prospective tenant is proposing to occupy approximately forty-six hundred square feet, ground floor space at the new mixed-use building at fourteen oh one Kings Highway. Um, the applicant suggests, uh, as part of their proposal and application, that the proposed use uh, is complimentary to the residential and commercial uses in the transit-oriented development park, as well as commuters utilizing the adjoining Fairfield Metro train station. The applicant submitted, um, the proposed lease terms with this tenant and, and talked about their efforts to ensure that, um, to the best that they can, that it would reduce the impact of odor and noise to adjacent tenants, because that's clearly a, a concern of the landlord, that their adjacent residential tenants and adjacent commercial tenants are not disrupted by this. There was some concern, uh, in dialogue amongst the commission that this applicant, um, has shown how they intend to reduce that, um, consequence, yeah, but there was some concern that, uh, how, how do we ensure that i- if this regulation is proposed, that any future other applicant might do the same? And so there was a suggestion that perhaps, uh, we consider some of the performance standards that were, that were, uh, taken from the lease. So what we've, what I put forth in the staff report is if you wanted to include some additional language, is to propose to add to the, to the permitted uses section that's being offered to you, um, additional language and quote, "Provided that the applicant shall demonstrate all reasonable efforts to prevent any unreasonable offensive odor or excessively loud noise to emanate outside of the premises." Um, I don't want to speak for the commission, but again, this was this, that additional language would then ensure that any other applicant, uh, would have to satisfy you, um, that they've taken all reasonable efforts to, to reduce that possibility. The standard considerations for a regulation amendment include, number one, is the proposal consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Number two, does time, experience and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for this proposed amendment? Number three, has it been demonstrated that the proposal is warranted and will serve the general health, welfare and safety of the town? And lastly, number four, would the proposed amendment permit a level of development that would increase undue traffic congestion? Uh, that is my brief summary, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um, okay, well, I, I had a question, but I'll obviously wait till we get a motion on. Um, may I have a motion on this matter? Commissioner Braun?
Motion to approve, I have questions, though.
Motion to approve the language from the applicant or from, uh?
As, as modified, but in discussion, we might want to modify it further, so I'd like to have, discuss it first. I guess I'll.
Are you, are you using the applicant's language or are you using the recommended language for now from the staff?
I like, I like Mr. Went's language, but it might need to be expanded further based on comments from last hearing about waste removal. I'm wondering if it should be added or not.
Okay, but as of now, it's moved to approve with the language, uh, provided by staff.
Correct.
I just, so everybody knows where we're starting from. May I have a second? Commissioner Berman, seconds. Okay, Commissioner Braun?
So, I, I like it, I think it's appropriate, um, but as we brought up last time, once you change what's allowed in a zone, it, it sort of ties our hands a little bit, and so I do think we need some restrictions on it. Jim, or can someone explain, so do we go through, what process do we go through when we add this language? Does that require any type of special permit or we simply review it to see if it complies with this regulation if we add this language?
It would be the latter, um, that, this applicant has offered, uh, the steps that they have taken, uh, to, in an attempt, uh, to satisfy you that there won't be any, uh, off-site or, or off lease space consequence and is, in what this language would do, it would require any other applicant to, to satisfy you that they've done the same. So it would be a zoning compliance application, and of course, at your discretion, you can always have a hearing, uh, but they would have to provide, satisfy you, that the burden would be on the applicant for you, uh, to, to satisfy you that they've made it, all the reasonable efforts to reduce those issues.
And last time I recall, um, there were questions about waste removal. It, it, it should some, would it be appropriate to add more language and effective waste removal? There, um, I think this establishment is going to have around a hundred dog capacity. So if that's at full, you have to assume it's at full capacity, that's a lot of waste and, um.
I, I, I think that would be a reasonable add-on, um, to, provided the avenue, the efforts to prevent unreasonable offensive odor, noise in, or demonstrate, include that they've demonstrated, uh, an effective protocol for waste removal, I think would be a reasonable addition to that.
I would like to a, amend my motion to add the language you exactly cited just now. I didn't type it.
Is that a fair, do you accept that, uh, amendment?
I, I do, and when it's my turn, I'll propose something, uh, additional as well.
That's fair. Commissioner Braun, um, your met, your motion has been amended, anything else?
No, nothing else to add from?
For now, at least.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Berman and then Commissioner Ford has his hand, uh, virtually raised.
Sure, in, in the public hearing, I raised some questions about the fact that this would be an as-of-right, uh, use as it's been proposed. Um, I do think that, um, you know, this is, i- i- it's a creative use, i- it is a compatible use uh, with the, the residential, uh, facility to the extent that there may be many, um, residents who have dogs who might utilize it. Um, and that the operator, you know, the, the tenant, the proposed tenant appears to be, um, to have a track record and, and a plan for dealing with noise, uh, odors and, and waste. Um, the, in their lease, uh, which was, i- i- presented to us in the record as, you know, proposed, um, limiting condition for the, you know, the otherwise as-of-right use that we would have, have to approve if they met the, the, uh, criteria. There is, um, a, a quantification of the decibel level that's permitted and, um, the, um, you know, the, the, the tenant, uh, noted that they have facilities in other locations where the decibel level of, um, you know, the, the maximum number of dogs barking can get up into a hundred and three, a hundred and four decibels. Um, and then in the, in this lease, the tenant was willing to limit, um, the, the noise in the adjoining, uh, residences to, um, forty, uh, D-B-A sixty, or sixty D-B-C. Um, and, uh, four, forty-five D-B-A or sixty D-B-C for adjacent commercial spaces. So, um, and the way it's phrased in the lease, uh, is the lease prohibits excessively loud noise as further described below. And then there's two sentences at the end of that provision. Let's say, "To quantify the measure of no, the measure of sound from tenants' operations for performance compliance under this section." And then it defines it. So, um, I am comfortable with the language proposed by staff and, and amended by Commissioner Braun, but I would add this, these two sentences also that quantify what constitutes, um, what constitutes excessively loud noise. Otherwise, I, I fear that we may be in a, um, you know, not in a position with subsequent applicants to determine, well, what's excessively loud.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I remember talk, thinking it through about whether we wanted to include that as well. Uh, if it's, if the language we had is sufficient with the, the proviso, we just tell the, we, we re- request our staff keep this lease in, in our back of our, uh, in our file, and if anything comes forth, that this is something we will look to. Um, but I think it's a fair, well, certainly, obviously, a fair point, uh, of discussion. Um, Commissioner Braun, a request has been made, um, for friendly amendments to include, um, the last two sentence, I mean, I think he said two sentences, but essentially identifying the noise levels that would be tolerable.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of adding a noise, um, restriction, however, when you look at that chart we just got, it's got different colors on it and it talks about the threshold of pain. We just got this today i- in the email, um, forty-five decibels might be on the low side. I mean, it's probably appropriate for this development because there are adjacent offices or, or something, uh, in the same building. I wonder if that would be too restrictive if it's, say, a standalone building, because when you look at the chart of pain threshold for noise, forty to forty-five is called a quiet office. I'm a little confused about the chart, one side says decibels, D-B. Well, I guess that's decibels, right? Yeah, I don't know what D-B-A and D-B-C is, but forty, forty-five.
I asked that last time and he never answered, what was the difference between A and C?
Commissioner Berman, I think you know the difference, don't you? Can you help us out?
I'm not, I'm not, uh, an expert on this, but I believe that D-B-A is the most common scale for decibel levels and then D-B-C is used for, um, sound levels that have, um, high level of bass. Like, uh, uh, the bass, uh, speakers in a club, nightclub.
Yeah, that's, I think I looked that up too, uh, and I think that is accurate essentially, uh, two, two measurements. One regular as I'm talking to you now and then the other as Commissioner Berman said, um, bass levels.
So, what, it, it, it keeps it to a level of, according to this chart, fifty to sixty is called normal conversation. Uh, forty to forty-five is called quiet office. The next level up is like seventy to seventy-five, that's called loud radio. Seventy to eighty is called city street. So I mean, um, it, it might be too restrictive if someone has a standalone building to have to keep it to the level of a quiet office or a normal conversation, but it, you know, if we're going to allow it, we might.
Well, let's, um.
Use the reasonable standard and a maximum perhaps, but maybe a little higher, and then i- if it's not reasonable in that situation, we could make it lower.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? Let's, um, let's table, not table it, but let's, uh, hear from other commissioners, uh, and I just ask, um, as, for any commissioner speaks, if they can speak on, uh, Commissioner Berman's, uh, request, uh, maybe getting an idea or a cons- we can get a consensus on where we're going with it, because we're tar, you know, we're dealing with details like this, um. So let's, Commissioner Ford, you're up next, if you can just lower your, uh, virtual hand when, after you start.
Uh, yeah, I have no objection to the application, I don't have an objection to the, the proposed amendments either. Um, I just remind, I mean, remind ourselves of, you know, where this specific location is, is basically on top of the train station, you know, where trains are coming every three or four minutes, you know, so it's a, it's a louder area, uh, of the town to begin with. And I know we're trying to protect the residents above and other, other off, and the people in the offices, uh, aside this, uh, location. But nevertheless, um, I, I think it's a good use for the space, I think it's, um, they had a, a nice presentation. It seems like they're, you know, they're professional. Um, I mean, I remember years ago, a coworker saying she drops her dog off at, at a dog daycare every day, I thought she was insane. But I, I think more and more people do this, um, so why not? And I hope them, I wish them well, I just hope, you know, more people are getting on the trains to, uh, make sure that they had, you know, a funnel of people and, um, plenty of potential customers. So I would support the amendments and I would, I would, I would approve it.
And supporting, again, Commissioner Berman's amendment?
Yes.
Okay, just, thank you. Uh, I have some thoughts, minor ones, any other commissioners, though? Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
I would support it as proposed by staff and amended by Commissioner Berman.
Right. Any other commissioners? Yeah, I think, from my, I'll jump in if you don't mind, um, and just for, I guess, the record, I do believe that this regulation amendment meets criteria that we need to, um, we need to look at for granting a regulation amendment, uh, doggy daycare, obviously, or, uh, and overnights for doggy daycare may not be exactly spelled out in our plan of conservation and development, but I do believe that this, uh, time and experience, responsible planning allows for this, it's a good area for it. Uh, it certainly would, I think it would serve the health, I'd say, for the town. Um, and certainly, I don't believe, don't, would cause any undue traffic congestion. Um, certainly, I, I think that, uh, staff's uh, amendments or proposed language, um, works. Uh, expect, and then adding on, uh, Commissioner, um, Braun's, um, amendment then with waste disposal. Um, I think it can go either way, as to Commissioner Berman's, uh, I'm fine putting it in there. Though I, my initial thought was if we have the broad language that gives us the, um, the broad, uh, author, thor, uh, excuse me, broad discretion to look at future applications, of course, this is only for TOD. Um, but I suspect this could be something that could move elsewhere, but we are eliminate only, this is only be for TOD. Um, this is something that is going to be in their lease, so it would somewhat make sense to keep it uniform for this, uh, application. Should something come up later in another district that requires, or maybe makes us rethink the decibel levels, as, uh, somebody said, a freestanding building without a neighbor or out, um, by a busy street or something, we can adjust it there. Uh, I'm comfortable going either way, um, uh, but the decibel level of, I think adding the decibel level as Commissioner Berman suggested is, uh, fine and fair for now, considering it's going to be limited to TOD. If we have to go for future amendments, other districts that will come before us as a regulation amendment, um, and, uh, probably, uh, whatever other application for us to consider as well. Uh, and either we can use the same language with the decibel levels or reconsider it, uh, however the application comes forth. I'm comfortable with Commissioner Berman's as well. Comfortable either way, but I I would approve. I would support Commissioner Berman's amendment. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I just request if Commissioner Berman could reread the language, because I don't recall whether it's the cap is on the decibel level that emanates from the premises or is within the premises. I think we'd be focusing more on what's escaping or emanating from the premises. I don't know if that was clear.
Sure.
Commissioner Berman?
Sure, so the language of those two sentences is as follows. To quantify the measure of sound from and wherever it says tenant, I will say applicant, it said. To quantify the measure of sound from applicant's operations for performance compliance under this section. And I think we should delete the the number four F under this section. The instantaneous maximum, L max, fast response from uh applicant's operations, including dogs barking, shall not exceed the average L E Q within the adjacent spaces by more than four D B A or seven D B C, period. When the average sound levels of adjacent spaces are not measured, the noise level from applicant's operations shall not exceed an instantaneous L max fast response within the adjacent space of forty D B A slash sixty D B C for adjacent residential spaces and forty-five D B A slash sixty D B C for adjacent commercial spaces. So I to Commissioner Levy's question, it it is measuring the level of sound as perceived in adjacent residential spaces and adjacent commercial spaces. And uh it it also uh the the first sentence also deals with the differential between uh the tenant's space uh or the applicant's space and the um adjacent spaces.
So as long as it's basically focusing on what's emanating or what what would be perceived in the adjacent, because I suspect that it might be quite loud inside the premises when dogs are barking, so.
Yeah, and I I didn't, you know, study this in detail, but my feeling was that if the tenant and the landlord in this premises were able to agree to this um quantification of what it means to be in excessively loud noise, then that was at least acceptable to this uh applicant.
Who is, you know, seems to be an experienced purveyor in these services.
Yeah, bring in that wood chair.
Um this I mean, I'm not going to say it's an industry standard, but they seem to be experienced. Uh this is what they're willing to do. So there's some authority to that aspect of it. And as Commissioner Levy rightly pointed out, it's certainly louder inside and puts the onus on tenant or any other app applicant in the future to properly use sound uh barriers or prevention or whatever. Um any other member of the public, uh public, excuse me, uh commission? Commissioner Braun, we're coming back to you with um Commissioner Berman's uh request uh for that friendly amendment that he just recited.
Yeah, I I think that's I think that's fine. I think it gives good guidance.
Uh I believe the second Commissioner Berman, I assume you're agreeing with yourself. Okay, so the applicant, uh the motion on the table, I'll say it since enough time has lasted, is the motion to approve with the language recommended by staff plus uh Commissioner Bron's request that Mr. Wen provided with respect to waste management plus um I I guess essentially the last two sentences that Commissioner Berman had uh read out to us, um changing the tenant from applicants, making it here, I guess, making any other technical or typographical changes to fit, but still meaning the substance of the two sentences. So did I re, did somebody reread that, or is that enough of a decent summary for A, first you, Mr. Wentz, and then B, for the commission?
I'm okay, Mr. Chairman, but I can sum it up very quickly is that that um we're going to, in addition to the language that was established this as a permitted use, we're adding the following performance standards, provided that the applicant shall demonstrate all reasonable efforts to prevent unreasonable offensive odor and excessively loud noise into demonstrate an effective protocol for waste removal. And then supplementing that is the the grabbing the last two sentence of the lease to quantify what is meant by excessively loud noise, which is spelled out in that lease. I think I think that's very workable, and we can deal with that.
Okay. Any other member of the commission wish to speak on this matter? I think we were all very impressed with the application and really the this was just dealing with how to deal with the the regulation amendment. Um although I did call this separately, we will get to the next uh their actual application uh next, but having said that, can we move to a vote? All in favor of the regulation amendment as recited by Mr. Wentz, please say aye or raise your hands. I think I count seven, but any opposed? Extensions passes unanimously. Moves us to the next item, which is fourteen zero one King's Highway zoning compliance application of fourteen zero one King LLC to establish a dog daycare, overnight boarding, grooming and training use in a portion of an existing bill building. Uh design commercial district, transit oriented uh district.
I I don't have anything new to add, uh Mr. Chairman. I think the commission is familiar with what's proposed, and given the regulation approval, uh I have nothing more to add at this stage.
May I have a motion on the table on this application? Commissioner Berman? Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, Commissioner Braun. Commissioner Berman?
Uh the uh the applicant uh demos demonstrates through its noise control uh plan and through its lease um that it's compliant with our regulation as amended, I believe. Um obviously, we have um you know, enforces, you know, zoning enforcement authority if issues arise in the future. Um but um you know, the the applicant will also be, you know, um in control of its uh of the of the the tenant through its lease, and the noise mitigation um uh strategies that were proposed and and by the the tenant uh seem to be designed to to meet the the requirements of the lease.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I have nothing to add to what Commissioner Berman just said. I agree with him.
Any other member of the commission? Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Berman, uh tip my hand with the other one, kind of lost the idea that there was two, but uh I think we was a professional application, professional um purveyor of these services, uh being an addition of Fairfield. And certainly look like it met our new regu- our new regulation amendment. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye or raise your hands. I think I see seven again, but any opposed? The abstention, Commissioner Harrison, I assume that was approval?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion passes unanimously. Next item in old business, zoning regulation amendment, application of a town plan and zoning commission to amend section two point four of the zoning regulations, proposed prohibition of cannabis establishments. Mr. Wentz?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, as we uh as I outlined uh for you at the last meeting during the public hearing, the uh Public Act twenty-one dash one, uh an act concerning the responsible and equitable regulation of adult-use cannabis requires commissions to make affirmative decision as to what types of cannabis establishments are to be permitted or whether they're to be prohibited in what uh this commission is proposing is to prohibit all cannabis establishments for at least a year. We're suggesting the expiration date, unless further extended by the commission, to be February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three. Uh that will allow time to see how the landscape is shaping up with respect to these types of uses, and the commission can at that time or any time between now and then, should this be approved, decide to extend that prohibition or uh propose them to be permitted uses, but snapshot view of this is proposed to be prohibited. Uh I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, uh if that if we need to to revisit some more of the details that I provided last time.
Commissioner Harrison, you have a motion?
Yes, I have a question for for Mr. Went. Um now, if we choose to opt out of this, you know, we see how this plays out, can we actually write our own regulations on cannabis?
If you if if the commission desires to regulate any or all of the uh cannabis uses defined, yes, it would be to establish where uh you think they what A, which uses you want to permit, B, where they should be permitted, and C, what manner of application should that require? So the answer to your question, I think, is yes. If if you choose to to wish to permit any of the defined cannabis establishments, we would have to um outline which of those you wish to permit, what zones or districts uh and what other limiting criteria you might want to consider in what manner of application that would take.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, I I realize I asked you a question without there being a motion on the table, so I apologize. Um I had some further comments, but I'll wait for you, Mr. Chairman.
You got to go first if you make the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Um no, I I think there's great wisdom here, obviously, to let this play out and connect it. Um but I also think I I did some research on it this week, um because this is a big deal going into the cannabis business. Um you know, there's a federal law that still prohibits marijuana. I understand that Colorado and Washington do sell it, but I would, you know, I think we need to spend this year if we do choose to opt out for or or do a moratorium for a year and really do do our due diligence with this, you know, talk to the healthcare professionals out there, law enforcement, you know, advocates for it, parents, you know, people who are stakeholders in this to really understand and get knowledge on this. Um I I think this is a big deal. I think I don't know what the demand is for selling marijuana, but I I just want to understand this more. I just really hope we take our diligence this year and and to fully understand what what could be at stake here for the town.
Can I infer that you had a motion to approve the moratorium?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second on the motion? Commissioner Berman? Sorry, Commissioner Harrison, I I should have been uh interrupted earlier, but that's fine.
Of course.
Uh Commissioner Berman, anything else to add or?
I agree with Commissioner Harrison. I think that we should take the time uh that the moratorium gives us to um to study um what we want to do um when the moratorium expires.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur. I concur with both of you. Commissioner Braun, I think I saw your hand up. You're on mute.
Just as a point of clarification, the statute allows us to either permit it or prohibit it. A moratorium would seem to be a subcategory of prohibiting it, just limiting our prohibition for a one-year period, and then it would automatically not be prohibited. What explain how the moratorium works exactly, so I understand that.
Uh Commissioner, uh excuse me, Mr. Went, please.
Yeah, um I I I agree uh with what you said, that a moratorium is a prohibition. It's just a a time-limited prohibition, but that's an open-ended um time limit that this commission could later uh go back to public hearing and amend that to either extend it to a a future date or to make it a permanent prohibition, or um to propose regulations should you wish to to um permit any of these uses.
So my understanding, Commissioner, uh excuse me, Mr. Went, is if we don't do anything, I think, as you said last time, uh it's deemed to be approved as a similar use like retail. So if if we have this moratorium one year, and if we hypothetically let it lapse, then that default of it being a permitted use like retail would be triggered.
That's correct.
Okay, so we, you know, just to put everybody on notice, if we let this moratorium lapse, it is becomes a permitted use. Uh so we will, and that could, if we decide for that to happen, then so be it. Uh but it's a permitted use as retail is. Should we want to regulate it uh separately from retail or in any any capacity, we need affirmative regulations, or should we want to prohibit it longer indefinitely, well, longer or forever indefinitely, we again need another affirmative action from our part. Sorry, Commissioner Braun, any other?
Yeah, so this seems similar, but not exactly identical to some of the other, quote, opt-out provisions that some of the other new legis uh new laws provide us. Well, we'll get to the other ones next, but they have deadlines of when you must opt out, or you will have adopted the state law instead of your own regulation. Is that what we're doing here, then? So if if we don't opt out by a certain date or either prohibit it or pass our own, then we will accept whatever the state rule is regarding cannabis? And therefore, that same thing would happen if the one year goes by and we haven't figured out what to do at the end of the moratorium?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I might just have a, Mr. Chairman, a process question on this. Um and I'll defer to you, obviously, but what would, I mean, just given what I outlined in my previous comments about doing our due diligence, you know, getting the experts in, even perhaps commentary from the town attorney on this, what do you envision us doing? Having a subcommittee, having public hearings? What do you recommend? I don't want to pick on this box. I this just came up, I know, but I just want to I just want to have a process in place, so, you know, it doesn't happen, you know, where next January pops up and the deadline has is coming.
Well, I suspect uh we should not be twenty twenty-three would be too late in a lot of ways for maybe affirmative regulations as opposed to extending a moratorium. But I would, I mean, Mr. Went, I would envision um either planning discussions can be done later mid later this year for the commission to be able to talk about um them uh at those regu- at those planning discussions, if it if it's possible to get uh people there, or we have to solicit that information on our own. What's, how do you see it?
Yeah, well, we can do, I I think, you know, we did hear at the hearing from a group uh called Fairfield Cares, that is an active group that engages with uh the Board of Ed uh in the youth of the town, and they were going to put forth a position statement that they haven't yet formally voted on, but I I would expect some resources to be forthcoming from from that group. So we will see, again, it's May of this year is when the licensing is going to happen. The state is still kind of figuring out how that's gonna work. So we will hopefully uh in the not-too-distant future have some experience on how this is rolling out, and we can have a more broader community discussion, but if if there's just not enough data yet um from the fall, uh then I would suggest we might want to consider at a minimum by then, if we're not comfortable or with, with which way we might be heading. By late fall, there's always the option to just continue the moratorium by extending it for a further period of time to allow that to take place. So I guess it's going to be a work in progress. We can, we can convene a, whatever working group of the commission might be interested to keep an eye on how this is, how this is rolling out in other locations and be able to report back. I know there are other elements of this statute that don't implicate the commission directly, that still have to be worked out. You know, townwide, in other, you know, in terms of how it can be consumed publicly. So those are things that still need a little time to, to bear some fruit. So I don't know if that was a great answer to Commissioner Harrison's question, but, but we're, we're mindful of, of what's at stake here in, in how this might go. So we, we intend on learning from other communities as we typically do in these circumstances. I'd be happy to share that with the commission at whatever forum this commission deems appropriate.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, no, thank you. That, that's really helpful. And I realize this is a very nascent law and very, you know, untoward waters for, for all of us. But I would also recommend we have some kind of, maybe think about doing a public workshop, because I imagine the public will have a lot to say about this. So I just want to keep that in mind as well, and I would be happy to be part of any kind of working group that the, the chairman recommends going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I think for staff, maybe a controlled date of September first, revisit this. Might be enough time, but probably, well, I'll rephrase, probably not enough time, but at least we'll have a better understanding at that point. Any other commissioners have comments or points of discussion for this application? Okay, we'll move to a vote. All to, uh, please say aye or raise your hand to approve this application. Excuse me, approve the, approve the motion, excuse me. I think I see seven, but any opposed?
Are, are we approve, are we voting to opt out?
We are voting for the one-year moratorium.
Oh, thank you, yes.
My apologies, I should have said it a little better. I got a little distracted. Again, move to approve the motion for the one-year moratorium. If you can raise, say aye or raise your hand, please, again, apologize. I think, again, I think I see seven. Any opposed? Extentions. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is zoning regulation amendments. Application of town, Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission to opt out of state mandated parking regulations. Mr. Wendt?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in, this is an opt-out provision. This statute is part of Public Act twenty one dash twenty-nine, has already been implemented. It's a provision that the zoning regulations shall not require more than one parking space for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit, or more than two parking spaces for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms, unless the community opts out. Now, in this case, a little bit different than what we just did, the opt-out versus a moratorium, is this requires a two-step process. It does require a two-thirds vote of this commission or five affirmative votes to opt out. And then the Board of Selectmen also has to vote to agree to opt out. So as we talked about at the last meeting, our regulations in our transit-oriented development districts already meet this standard or actually require fewer parking spaces than what's prescribed here. I don't think there's particularly broad applicability or, or huge impact on this one way or the other, except for there are areas of town in our designed residence district which require a higher level of parking. So if we have a, a housing development that's not near transit in a designed residence district, we haven't seen an application of that sort recently, but our regulations do allow for it. That we're suggesting there are, there are occasions in which it might not be appropriate to stick to the state-prescribed minimum and stick with the regulations that we have in hand. So that is why we're proposing to opt out. This is not a time-barred thing. This would be a permanent opt-out and does, should this commission vote and does require a two-thirds vote, again, also requires a subsequent meeting of the Board of Selectmen to agree to also opt out. There's, that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wendt. May I have a motion, Commissioner Braun?
I move to opt out pursuant to Mr. Wendt's recommendation.
May I have a second? Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I've, in certain areas of town, as Mr. Wendt pointed out, we meet or exceed the state guidelines that are in the new legislation. Other areas, we might not, but we do have a unique community here. We have different types of land in different parts of the town, and we have to be able to retain our ability to plan accordingly. So we've done a great job with adding diversity of housing, adding density where it's appropriate. But we also need to be able to plan properly for our, the other unique aspects of our town. So for that reason, I think it's important that we retain our own ability to designate appropriate parking for appropriate areas of our town. So opting out is, is the, the right move here.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
No, I have nothing further to add. I would echo exactly what Commissioner Braun said. I don't think a one-size-fits-all parking protocol should be in place in Fairfield or any other town. I think we should, we should have the ability to do the appropriate planning on our end.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission? Commissioner Berman?
Um, I, I think that our, our town, our zoning commissions, our land use commissions and our staff have done a great job of, of being ahead of the curve.
Thank you. I support the, I support this motion as well to opt out for reasons stated already. Any other members of the commission? We put this to the vote. All those in favor of the motion to opt out, please say aye or raise your hand. I see seven, but any opposition? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. Next item is we, I, where am I? Item E. Application of Town Plan and Zoning Commission to amend section six point zero of the zoning regulations, accessory apartments, and proposed opt-out of state mandated language. Mr. Wendt?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, in this case, there's going to be two separate motions and votes required. We are proposing to opt out of the state mandated language for accessory apartments, but at the same time, we're also proposing some amendments. So I would first, I'm going to outline the amendments, I think would be appropriate first, to consider those. And as we talked about at our last meeting, Fairfield has a long history of supporting and promoting accessory apartments. We've had an accessory apartment regulation since nineteen eighty-six, most recently amended in two thousand and twenty-one. We are fairly close to the mandated state language. We will get even closer to that mandated state language with, with some of these proposals that we're putting forth. But as I outlined at our last meeting, we do have some unique geographies, particularly the Beach District, in which we don't feel it's appropriate to require accessory apartments. So let me just outline the proposed amendments to our existing regulations. Right now, accessory apartments are permitted in any single-family district. And that's consistent with, in what we're proposing is that in addition to the single-family districts, that the B and C zones also be included. Those are zones that permit two, or two-family homes in the B zone. In the case of the B zone, if there's requisite lot size. In the C zone, if there's enough lot size at three or even a four-family dwelling. We're not promoting an accessory apartment be permitted in a multifamily unit. The language is adding, B and C zones may be converted in the case where they, where there exists a single-family dwelling. So it's a one-family dwelling situation. So if you have a, a, a multifamily dwelling in the B or C zone, you would not be eligible for a single-family, or I'm sorry, for an accessory apartment, only for a one-family residence located in those zones. We are also proposing to eliminate the requirement for annual recertification. We do have an affidavit that's required to, when, when an application is made, so the owner knows that they have to reside either in the accessory apartment or the main dwelling. They can't rent out both units. And we do have a form that is required for a new owner to submit. But what we are proposing is to eliminate the annual recertification process. In the last major change is that in the two thousand and twenty-one amendments, the commission added that a detached accessory apartment be allowed in our two-acre zone, the residence AAA. What we are proposing is to expand that opportunity to the one-acre, the double-A zone, which is a one-acre zone, and the R-three zone, which is essentially a half-an-acre zone. Under the condition that the lots meet the minimum lot area in the zone in which they're in, they have to meet the setbacks of primary structures, not accessory structures. So they have to meet the primary structure setback, and that the primary residents cannot also have an accessory apartment. So they can't have an accessory apartment within the house and a detached unit. Part of the state mandated language that we are proposing to opt out from would require that detached units be permitted in any district on any lot. We don't think, and, and through the discussion with this commission, the commission doesn't support that on smaller lots, but thought it was appropriate to consider that opportunity in the one-acre and half-acre lots. So those are the changes we are proposing in our existing regulations, in addition to the opt-out. So, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you, you discuss in, in here, or, or vote on those separately, the, the proposed amendment package and then the opt-out.
Okay, we will do that. So moving forward, we are only looking at the regulation amendments. For now, may I have a motion on the regulation amendments? Commissioner Francis? You're on mute.
I was going to move to separate these two items, and now that is being done. So I guess that leaves us with discussing these three features. Having accessory apartments in B and C zone housing. No annual recertification process. And no accessory, um, ADUs. Except in the AAA where we have approved it, and now this is proposing to add two more. One question, Mr. Wendt, what, what happened to the A zone? Why don't we have an A zone?
We, we have an A zone. The, it's permitted, right now, accessory apartments are permitted in the A zone. We're just proposing that they, a detached unit not be in the A zone.
Oh, why would that be? We're doing, we're proposing it in double-A and R-three, which are smaller.
No, double-A is one acre. R-three is half acre. A is less than a quarter acre. A is under ten thousand square feet.
Oh, A is small.
Right, right. Triple-A is two acres, double-A is one acre, R-three is half. That's where we're drawing the line. At the half acre, less, lots of lesser size would not be eligible for detached.
And the A is the tiny, okay, thanks for clarifying. I don't have a problem with including B and C.
Well, let me start with this.
The only thing I would say is it's not going to increase our affordable housing. Well, first of all, I'm supposed to be making a motion. All right, move to approve.
Okay, and then, do I have a second? Commissioner Berman? Commissioner Francis?
I don't have an intrinsic thought, not including B and C. But I think we should do it in light of increasing affordable housing. There is no carrot here for a person, a homeowner, to create an accessible apartment, when often, I imagine the resident of the said apartment would be eligible for, would meet their, our eligible criteria. I don't have a problem with in no annual recertification, although I hope things don't get lost in the shuffle over the years. But if zoning staff thinks that's a way to go, you, you don't have a problem with that you might have a list of two hundred and fifty accessory apartments, and really about thirty of them have been lost over a period of a few years in resales. The title searches are always that specific and proper.
It's been our experience that we have occasions where folks have opted not to continue utilizing their apartment. But those that want to maintain the apartment do so. And, and when those properties are sold, the title searchers and mortgage companies and real estate folks that come in want some level of assurance from the buyer that, that if they want to continue that apartment, that it's, it's been legitimately approved. And, and that's really been a more effective enforcement tool for us than an annual certification. And that's also been a tool for us to sign up additional apartments where, where an apartment may have been created without the benefit of any kind of permit and then is sold. Then it becomes whether or not that apartment is, can be made eligible under the regulations. So it kind of works both ways. So I, I, in, in our experience, the transactional requirements tend to be a much more effective tool for enforcement than, than an annual form that, that folks fill out and send in.
Well, I would defer to your judgment on that. All right. And the third part, however, I probably should have separated the two from the one, because I, I do not support the third at this time until we meet with affordable housing, have more discussion about it. I, I don't know about.
Which, just so I understand, which third are you talking about? The AAA, the, excuse me, the double-A?
Accessory dwelling units, separate structures in your yard in the double-A and the R-three zones.
Okay, do you, do you object to the?
It does nothing to increase our affordable housing. And since that's our goal, one of our town goals, it's, I, I don't like putting this text through.
But I'm, just so I understand it, though, you're talking about in section six point three point eight. You object to the inclusion of the two new zones or the other text amendments in that six point three point eight?
No, not the B and C. That's acceptable if it meets all the criteria of setback and height and coverage, since all the other zones have it. And that, and that certainly gives us a long, brings us a long way towards compliance with this state regulation law. And the, you know, it's
But it's only the inclusion of, it's only the inclusion of double-A and the R-three, and R-three zone?
That part, yes.
But just the inclusion? But just the inclusion of the two zones?
Yes. That part, I think we should have a lot more discussion about in planning, that this just isn't the appropriate venue to do it in. I approve opting out, which will be second. And the B and C inclusion and the no annual certification, since staff is comfortable with it, I have no, I have no problem with it. But the inclusion of the other two zones without any incentives for affordable housing is going too far in my mind at this time.
Okay. Well, why don't?
Perhaps I should separate one from two and three, because I don't want to vote against my.
Well, why don't we do this? Let's move to Commissioner, unless you have other comments?
No.
I'm gonna cut you off. Why don't we move to Commissioner Berman, and we'll circle, we'll go through some of the other commission, get their input, and circle back to what I understand to be your only concern about including double-A and R-three into the 6.3.8. Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. I would approve that text amendment as drafted by staff. In 2010 or 2011, our town became, you know, one of the few to, in the state, to allow accessory dwelling units, or part of a modest number of towns that did so. In 2021, after much deliberation and discussion, we expanded that, allowed greater access to these ADUs, sometimes known as in-law apartments or otherwise. And we contemplated, and we expanded detached accessory dwelling units to the AAA zone, the two-acre zone. Even at that time, we had discussion about whether the AAA zone was too restrictive, whether we should expand it to the double-A and R-three zones, the, you know, the one-acre and the half-acre zones. And it was decided that we would move incrementally. And now, we have legislation that was passed at the state level that caused us to take a hard look at our ADU regs and, you know, even to expand them. The state would require us to have, to allow detached accessory dwelling units in all residential zones. I think that, you know, that might not be appropriate, but I do think that there's ample room in the, you know, the one-acre zones and the half-acre zones for tasteful, efficient accessory dwelling units. In terms of affordable housing and diversity of housing, so we had, we had this discussion last year as well, and I'm of the opinion that, number one, ADUs are naturally occurring affordable housing because of their small size and because of their accessory nature, you know, their accessory to a larger dwelling. They're naturally going to be lower-priced than the main dwelling and more affordable in that sense, you know, structurally, right? And second, they provide a diversity of housing, additional diversity of housing. So, there's many people like, you know, seniors and young people who are just starting out in life, who would, you know, benefit from and who are attracted to the idea of living in an accessory dwelling unit. And, you know, anecdotally, when you're driving around, sometimes you see, you know, for-sale signs saying "in-law apartment." So, I do think it's something that we should expand access to for those who want it, and I think that it will increase our diversity of housing and our affordability of housing.
Thank you. Any other members of Commissioner Braun and Commissioner Levy?
I have a question for Mr. Went. Is there any obligation to do a text amendment while we do the opt-out? In other words, is there any requirement that you're aware of that we have to change our current accessory apartment regulation in order to comply with the new law?
No, there is no, there is no requirement to update what we have in order to opt-out. You can opt-out in the absence of any amendments.
So, I'm a little confused about what the, I mean, I'm glad we can opt-out, but the opt-out, I assume you have to have some accessory apartment regulation in order to opt-out, but it doesn't have to at all match what the state has in the state law, right? You can have anything you want in your own regulation and still be able to opt-out? That's confusing to me.
Correct. If you do not, in the absence of opting out, the language prescribed by the state is deemed to be the default language for your community.
Okay. So, we can, we can craft, I do believe we could expand our regulations somewhat more. I do believe we need more time. We just did this a year ago, and as I recall, last year, we went through a process that lasted several months. We also, you know, listened carefully to housing advocates and the public and the Affordable Housing Committee in helping us craft and then refine our expansion that we did a year ago. I would like to have a little bit more time. I agree with Commissioner Francis that if we are going to be meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee in about a month or so, let's wait, because I would like to consider adding an affordability component. And I don't know if that's actually prohibited by the new law or not. I saw something in there about you can't make any rules related to the source of income. I don't know if that has anything to do with affordability or not. We might want to hear from the town attorney. I would like to expand it, but I also have some concerns about this. I think, you know, half-an acre might be too small to allow a freestanding mini-house, and I think we should, we should look around at what these plots of land look like and see what could happen if you allow a tiny house to be built on the same property on a half-an acre. That's not very big. And also, I have concern over the, getting rid of the annual affidavit. So, if not doing these particular changes is okay in terms of opting out, and if there's no deadline to do the text amendments, I would like to table the text amendments for two months, so we have a chance to meet with the Affordable Housing Committee, maybe do a little more research and look around and hear more voices, because I am concerned if we allow freestanding mini-houses on a half-acre lot, that's, that's a lot. That could be bad. So, I would like to table the text amendment and move forward with the opt-out. I think we've done an incredible job a year ago, but we put a whole lot more time into it and more consideration from more stakeholders. And I would like to allow that planning opportunity to happen before we do another text amendment. And I don't know, do I make a motion to table within her motion to approve?
Well, let's finish, I have a recommendation procedurally how to move forward, but let me, let's go through, since we have a motion on, Commissioner Levy's up next, and we'll circle back to, because Commissioner Francis, I think, had some thoughts about amending her motion. You were thinking of a new motion, so I'll tell you that. What my thought is, maybe we should have Commissioner Francis withdraw her motion and have a new motion put in place. I think that might be a little cleaner, and then, considering how everybody else speaks, maybe that'll be, this, a new motion will be informed as to maybe a consensus if we draw one. But Commissioner Levy, why don't you go?
Yeah, I was going to address the, you know, the aspect of adding income levels or affordable housing components. I'd be reluctant to do that. I'm not sure where we stand procedurally as to whether that's in or out of the motion, but my concern would be that having an affordability component might preclude having accessory units be in-law apartments, you know, which is one of the, one of the goals that you want to address, which are totally unrelated to any affordability component. I agree with Commissioner Berman that the, in general, the size and the nature of, you know, accessory units, dwelling units is such that inherently, they're more likely to be affordable within existing market conditions. So, I don't think I'd want to mix the two here and have an affordability component. Thank you.
Commissioner Harrison, then I'll jump in.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Braun and Francis, and, you know, I think it is worth noting again, this commission, just a year ago, you know, voted to expand the regulations that are tailored to, you know, to our town's unique characteristics and, you know, the nuances of Fairfield. You know, no town is similar. You know, what is good for Fairfield may not be good for another town, vice versa. So, I really want to make sure that we have a voice and have our planning hats on when we can talk about this further, and with all our stakeholders. You know, the Fairfield senior advocates, you know, play a large part in Fair Plan, you know, housing advocates, the Affordable Housing Committee. So, I just want to do our diligence on this, and again, I applaud this commission for the work that you've done to create a diversity of housing in Fairfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I, at the beginning, I was ready to support the application to approve as the regulation amendments stand. We did have, as noted, we expanded these regulations last year at some point. I thought we did a great job. My thoughts last year was that these things should be, I thought we could have gone farther than we did, and this is somewhat in line with hopefully going farther than what we had done, and I was supportive of it. I mean, we did have a hearing on the matter. This was noticed. We did, we could have gotten the input, and I kind of honestly don't remember if we had, we had some input, I don't believe it was on this, but, you know, it was noticed. We did have a public hearing on the matter. You know, looking down, we're just adding B and C to what could be, to the instances where it could be added on to the primary residence. To me, that seems very reasonable. There is language about affordable housing in the regulations as-is that's not added or to be amended in any way. It's 6.3.7. I'm not in a position to really go into much further detail as to how that applies here, just noting that it can, an accessory apartment can qualify as affordable housing. And this is, I don't remember if this is language we added last time or what. I'll ask Mr. Went, maybe, if he can recall after I finish. But we do have that aspect to it. I think it is a nice balance between what, being able to apply to qualify for affordable housing on the one hand, and then, but then still, I think, using it for what most people will probably use it for is an in-law apartment or newly graduated kid, or, you know, one of those, a family member, essentially. But we do have that option available to us. Going further down, the next part is what Commissioner Francis, I believe, had objected to, the freestanding accessory structure, including in the, included in the double-A and the R-three. I'm supportive of expanding it to these, again, still larger zones. We note in subsection A, we still have to meet the minimum lot area required. So, as I understand it, I mean, still is the lot coverage is in here somewhere where you can't go beyond the lot coverage. Both are, both need to be considered for lot coverage. You're not going to have anything greater than that, and I think that will be the important limitation as to whether you can have a freestanding unit in triple, in double-A or R-three. AAA is two acres, that's fairly large. One acre in R-three, if you've got a big house on there to begin with, you're not going to be able to get a freestanding, let alone, that doesn't mean maybe you can't get an attached, but maybe not freestanding, as that may require extra utilities and extra I'm not surprised to hear that real estate transactions, selling or buying, is a more effective way to enforce this than an affidavit that would be submitted every year. I wish I can say I'm surprised, but I'm just not surprised by that, and I, staff is in the best position in that respect. And if it's one less paper thing that needs to be done, form-over-substance idea, that is fine with me. So, I'm, I mean, my initial reaction was to approve the regulations. It's in line with my initial thoughts way back last year, that these should be expanded to allow people to use the properties, their own properties, as they can within existing regulations with respect to lot coverage setbacks and the like. I'm open to tabling it to allow for more information from other, and more input from other stakeholders. I note that we kind of had that from last year. We had the public hearing this time. You know, I don't, at some points, you know, we just, we don't need to make the decision today, as Commissioner Braun notes, we can't just opt-out and worry about it later, or, excuse, not worry, excuse my being a little flippant, but worry, revisiting the, revisiting this later. And I feel like I'm in a position to approve today. If the commission does not and wants to table it, so be it. Some point, you know, I don't think we can just keep hunting things to get more information. I think we've had plenty of time and input now, at least in this instance, but that's just my humble opinion. Again, I would move to approve, but if a consensus is to table, that's fine as well. Commissioner Braun, and then we'll go back to the motion that's pending and what to do with it, as I indicated earlier.
Yeah, so, to me, if we're going, if we're going, this is why I think we should table until we meet with the Affordable Housing Committee, that's only in one month. If we're going to add density that I feel is too much perhaps for a half-acre lot, I would like to have, to get something in return, to get affordability, and that might be something we should take up, but I'd like to have some time to consider that. And also, a question for Jim. What is the maximum freestanding accessory unit that the regulation, I'm looking at my regulations, but now I realize I might not have downloaded them after we did our revision? So, I thought it was 1,500. Is the maximum size of a freestanding unit 1,500 feet right now? Because that's pretty big, and to me, if you're renting a mini-home for, my God, I watched that show about tiny houses. They're beautiful. A 1,500-foot, square foot tiny is like three times the size of most of those tiny houses. You could probably get maximum rental value out of that. I don't think it would be sort of de facto affordable. I think it would be, unless you have a family member living there, I think it would be not affordable. And I would like to see if there's a way of adding an affordable component if we're going to allow a lot more mini-houses on lots that are smaller than two acres. That's why I would like to extend it beyond the Affordable Housing Committee. And maybe Jim can correct me if I'm wrong on that 1,500 square feet.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, I will get to that. You're correct. The maximum, it's not a minimum, there's no minimum size, but the maximum size is the lesser of 40% of the area of the main dwelling are 1,500 feet. So, there is a prescribed maximum, but not a prescribed minimum.
And then, getting to.
You are correct that we're not under any deadline pressure here. This is a commission's application, so there's not a strict statutory timeframe. I will say that we did hear from the senior advocates at the hearing that did support this, but I think it might be prudent in order to move this, is we can revisit and repackage, go back to the materials that were offered in support of the 2021 amendments from the Affordable Housing Committee and who were the applicants, to kind of refresh where we went with that. And so, we can try to repackage in kind of, for those that were not on the commission at that time, and for those who were, to kind of refresh where we were and how we got there. So, there is no time pressure, you know, to pull the trigger on this tonight, and we can try to bolster this with some additional information and whatever you might want. You're correct that we do have a, we will be having an upcoming meeting. I don't know if we're going to get this, that meeting is to talk about the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation for the Affordable Housing Plan. I will say, with respect to affordable housing, we did talk about that in 2021. This change to the statute does not include accessory apartments in the numerator for this calculation for moratorium status. We have talked internally as a town, within the administration, about potentially incentivizing folks to. folks to provide an affordable component to this, which will likely, if that occurs, there's, right now, there's a mismatch, and we've had some of this discussion, but for those of you that haven't heard it, there's a mismatch now in how the statute defines affordability for an accessory apartment. Clearly says that if it's deed restricted for a period of 10 years, it qualifies, but the State Department of Housing is relying on the statutory moratorium language that requires in order to get housing equivalency points that deed restriction has to be for at least 40 years. And we are working to try to match up that mismatch, which is really kind of outside of the commission's scope. But all that said, we can go back and provide you some more detail for what was submitted in 2021, if that helps. And I do agree that you are under no time pressure to act on this proposal this evening.
I would also like to specifically understand, maybe not tonight, but if we have a continuation of this discussion, I don't see coverage as being a restriction here or a requirement here. I only see that setbacks in height have to be followed for the normal zone. So I don't, I haven't done my analysis to know on a half acre lot that already has a garage and a house, can you meet setback requirements but simply pave over your whole property with another little house there? Still have a house, a garage, and then a mini house, and no, nothing else, except paved over land with three structures? Like, that might be too much, and I'd like to really understand that a little bit better. And if we are going to allow it, I'd like to have an affordability component. And yeah, we do need to know if it's 10 years or 30 years to get credit, or 40 years to get credit. That's more information I'd like to have, and since we're having this meeting, I'd like to factor that in. Thanks.
Yeah, just to respond to that first part of that, section 6.3.8, item B, is that the structure must conform to the required setbacks and other design requirements for primary structures. Those other design requirements, just like any, if you're building a new structure, regardless of what it is, whether it be a deck, or a garage, or shed, or a potential detached accessory apartment, all of that accumulated lot coverage would be limited. You don't get additional lot coverage or floor area. You have to work within the existing constraints to answer that first part of your question.
I was looking at 6.3.9, which is the freestanding one, and it doesn't mention coverage or design standards. It just says, you can build a freestanding accessory structure under the following conditions. Now, maybe there's a general provision upfront that could also cover this, but coverage is not mentioned in the specific section that talks about freestanding. And maybe we need to fix that if we come back at this again.
It's proposed in the, you're looking at the existing text. The proposed text is in 6.3.8, and it does have that clarification. But you're correct, it is under the general requirements of the overall regulations, but-
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to belabor that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to withdraw my motion?
Hold on, almost. Commissioner Bra, Commissioner Berman, but let me just ask a quick question of Mr. Went. Could we, I understand we have this meeting with affordable housing coming up. Could we even get this topic on the agenda at this point, or is that too late?
No, I mean, I can talk to Mr. Barnhart about that. I don't know if they're prepared to discuss that specifically. I know they were, the upcoming meeting is in order to get your input on the proposed recommendations in the Affordable Housing Plan, if that's going to lead towards, it could. I don't-
Okay, that's fine.
To the extent that we can accomplish both objectives, I will try to talk to Mr. Barnhart about that, but I can't guarantee that we can cover all of those bases on that one session.
Commissioner Berman, and then we'll talk about the motion.
Thank you. Well, responsive to Commissioner Braun, I agree that we could use more time to analyze and discuss this. So I, if Commissioner Francis does withdraw her motion, I would withdraw my second, and I would move to table this agenda, item E, to a future meeting.
Commissioner Francis, do you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
I will take up Commissioner Berman on his, Mrs. Harrigan.
Jim, I just wanted to ask a procedural question. Should they move to reopen the public hearing if we introduce new items for this next meeting in case there's additional language?
I don't know that that's necessary at this point. I think the motion to table would be sufficient, and then depending on what further dialogue ensues, we have the option always to go back to hearing if we think that's necessary. But I don't think we need to-
But there's no time constraint, they don't have to do it.
I don't think it would be our next meeting. I think it was in a couple more meetings.
Oh, right, correct.
Okay.
At least March.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. I will take up Commissioner Berman on his word that he's moving to table. You're on mute.
Yes. I moved to table.
Okay. I'm going to give that to Commissioner Berman, because I think he said it first. Commissioner Berman, move to table?
Yeah, move to table and move on to the floodplain regulations discussion.
Okay, and I'll, Commissioner Francis, you second that?
Yes, but we do have the other half of this-
No, I, yep, you beat me to it. So right now, we are just moving to table regulation amendments. That is the motion that's on.
I move to table both, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I, well, Mr. Went, do we have a deadline for the opt-out? I thought we were just for the, let me make sure I understand this.
Yeah, the opt-out, there is a deadline for the opt-out. We're not in, it's January of next year. So again, the two are independent of each other, so I'll leave that to the commission and how they want to proceed.
Okay. Commissioner Berman, can I, again, what is your, your motion is to table both?
Yes.
Commissioner Francis, understanding that, do you still second?
Right.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, all right.
Thank you. Okay. Unless, Commissioner Braun.
I do not believe we should table the opt-out. I think they're independent and separate from each other. We've already had many discussions last week, and maybe last time, maybe the time before, about the basis for opting out. We've shown, even in tonight's meeting, that we are dedicated to proper planning for our town. And we can, we're the best people in the best position to know what's best for our town. We should opt out for all the reasons that Mr. Went put in his memo, and the fact that we are dedicated, and we want to have more meetings to figure out the best way to expand our affordable, our accessory dwelling units for diversity of housing and for added affordability. I think we can opt out, and we should opt out, and I don't think we should delay that, waiting to do this. We've already expanded it once, we're going to expand it again. There's no reason to tie the two completely separate and distinct matters together.
I'll bring it back quickly to Commissioner Berman. Friendly amendment, I think, to separate the two, tabling only the regulation amendment.
With respect, I think that we should address the issue holistically. I'm certainly willing to have a discussion with the Affordable Housing Committee of how we could effectively, you know, amend our AD regulations, but I think we should address the issue not piecemeal, but together. And if we're going to discuss the opt-out tonight, I think we should discuss the regulation amendment. I think they're, you know, hand in glove, and I think that they should be discussed together.
Understood, okay. So the motion is as stands, tabling both items. As Mr. Went said, we have at least for the opt-out till early next year, you said, Mr. Went?
Yes, January 1 of 2023.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners wish to be heard, or can we put this to a vote? All in favor of tabling both items, please say aye or raise your hand. I see myself, Commissioner Levy, Commissioner Berman, and Commissioner Ford, all opposed. Commissioner Harrison, Braun, and Francis. Item passes 4-3, tabling both items. Readjust myself here. Moving to, I believe we're on section F of zoning regulation amendment, application of town plan and zoning commission to amend section 2.12 flood management and section 32.0 flood protection.
Jim wanted me just to give a quick summary.
Oh, yes, Mr. Harrigan, Ms. Harrigan, I remember, sorry.
That's okay. So for this one, as a reminder to the commission, we had a meeting with FEMA Region 1, and the purpose was to review our regulations, to determine whether or not we had any deficiencies. And essentially, the regulations that are before you to review and approve are recommendations from FEMA Region 1 to ensure that our flood hazard regulations are in compliance with their requirements. So it just includes things like providing a statutory reference as to where we get the authority to regulate flood management, floodplain management, purpose statements. It also requires a certain certification for certain floodplains from licensed architects and engineers, and then also removes boat houses as being allowed below mean high water in the high velocity flood zone. Outside of that, you know, they're fairly, I would, not insignificant, but they don't really change what we presently regulate. It just adds more substance to that section. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. May I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Braun? Commissioner Braun, you're on mute.
I move to approve the text amendments as drafted.
Commissioner Ford, I believe, seconds? See, a yes.
Yes, no further comment.
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, we had quite a bit of discussion last session on this. These changes are absolutely necessary. They help with our sustainability in light of climate change and flooding risk and FEMA. So I wholeheartedly support the text amendments that are put forth.
Commissioner Ford, any other comment?
No, I agree with everything Commissioner Braun says.
Thank you. Any other member of the commission? Put this to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand. I believe I see seven, but any opposition? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously.
I guess not here in the Republican-
So moving on to zoning compliance, coastal site plans, 1271 Fairfield Beach Road, coastal site plan application of Helene Salerno pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District. Mr. Went?
Actually, I'll do this one as well.
Excuse me, Ms. Harrigan, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you so much. So as this is a directly adjacent to Long Island Sound property with construction of a new single-family residence, this is required to be reviewed by you, the Plan and Zoning Commission. This is, if you were able to take a look at the materials within the packet, this is a very undersized lot, but there is a pre-existing home here. So what they are planning on doing is just demolishing the existing house and reconstructing a FEMA-compliant structure in compliance with the Beach District regulations. This is, it's a little bit complicated for this construction. Oftentimes, when we have really tight coastal sites, you know, we do have concerns about where they put excavated stockpile materials so that they don't negatively affect, you know, the sandy, the sandy beach adjacent and Long Island Sound. So the solution that they've been able to come up with for this particular application is to place their stockpile on an off-site location, so also included in your packet. And unusual for this type of application, but a good mitigation strategy for the applicant is that they have an additional parcel on Penfield, Penfield Road, where they're going to stockpile their materials. As, when they take materials, especially sand from Long Island, from beaches in Fairfield, we really want them to put that native material back where possible, because sand is hard to come by. So that's what they're planning on doing here. The proposal was reviewed by both DEP Wildlife. This is an area that has been identified as with, by the state, as having adjacency for potential state or federal threatened species, but the DEP Wildlife Division did review the site and the development plans, and they determined that there are no adjacent species that require any additional mitigation measures. Also, this was reviewed by DEP Coastal Planning Staff, and they reviewed the soil erosion and sedimentation controls, the onsite stormwater detention proposed, as well as the stockpile scenario. And they also felt that that, in conjunction with the coastal, the coastal planting plan, adequately addresses any potential impacts of the construction, as well as providing additional habitat in the landscaping when the construction is completed. So with that, staff recommends that you approve this project, but we are asking that you approve it with just a few conditions, as mirrored by some of the language in the DEP Coastal Planning Letter as well, that the native plantings be installed in conjunction with the coastal planting plan, that construction is in compliance with Fairfield's flood protection regulations, and the soil erosion and sedimentation controls be installed and maintained for both sites, for the entirety of the usage of both properties for construction purposes. So, you know, our staff would be comfortable in terms of understanding when they're done using the stockpile at Penfield and making sure that that's returned to a suitable stabilized situation. And then also, I had a condition in here, and at the last minute today, we did get our letter from the DEP Wildlife. So if you're looking at the conditions that I provided in the staff report, we can eliminate the fifth condition that requested that any additional measures from DEP Wildlife be added to this approval when we receive them. But we did get them today, and they didn't have anything to add. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. May I have a motion? Commissioner Braun?
Motion to approve, subject to the conditions.
The, as I understand it, the four conditions, not including the fifth one that Ms. Harrigan said, is, may not be needed?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a second? Second, Commissioner Francis? Commissioner Braun?
I have a quick question for, for Ms. Harrigan. Somewhere into the package, it says the impervious surface is going down from what it was, even though the building is bigger. Is that because it's being raised for FEMA reasons? So it's not touching the ground? Explain to me, why does impervious surface decrease?
On the zoning table, it is actually smaller. The lot coverage is smaller in the Beach District. Keep in mind that not just the house is counted as coverage, but also all impervious surfaces. So in the proposed new structure, it is actually decreasing slightly.
That's good. Yeah, so I think you did a good analysis, and I support it with the conditions that you put forth, except for the one that's already been satisfied by the DEP Wildlife Division.
Commissioner Francis, you seconded. Anything else to add?
No further comments, but thank you for the excellent report.
Commissioner Ford?
I just have a question. If, I'm just, I just looked this property up on Vision Appraisal, but it has a different owner. So the application is under Helene Salerno. We just confirm that they own the house?
Helene Salerno is the applicant, and the owners are Vivian and-
All right.
James Arresta, who are actually watching this evening as well.
Got it, so these are, she's not the homeowner. Got it. So these are, she's not the homeowner. All right. That's the only question I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the commission? We can move to a vote. All in favor of the motion with the four, right, Ms. Harrigan, four conditions? All those in favor of the motion with the four conditions as stated by staff, please say aye or raise your hand. I believe I see seven, but any opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. That brings us to our public hearing for the item, for the evening, our only Mr. White, it makes sense to call both items, I believe?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I agree.
Thank you. So I'll call the two items for public hearing. Zoning Regulation Amendment, Application of Sacred Heart University to amend section 5.2.5 the zoning regulations. And item 2175 Jefferson Street. Special Exception Application of Sacred Heart University pertains to the construction of additional student housing in the R3 zone. Attorney Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
I can, yes.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Frey and Bologna with offices at 1735 Post Road. I appreciate the commission hearing these items simultaneously. I'm here this evening representing Sacred Heart University, which, as you know, has its main campus located at the intersection of Park Avenue and Jefferson Street. This campus contains approximately 80 acres and is located in the R3 zoning district. The zoning regulations include a university use as a permitted use in the R3 zone via special exception approval. Application before the commission tonight is twofold. First, there's an application to amend section 5.2.5 of the zoning regulations. And secondly, a special exception application for approval of the construction of the North Dorm Freshman Housing. Proposed text amendment pertains specifically to section 5.2.5 and proposes the addition of a new section 5.2.5.5. The proposed section will read as follows. Quote, "With respect to college and university uses designated in section 5.1.4 Perrins D and Perrins, which are located in zoning district R3, neither the aggregate lot coverage of all buildings and structures on any lot, nor the total area of all buildings and other structures on any lot, excluding basement and parking garages per section 5.2.5.4, shall exceed the following percentages of the area of the lot. Lot coverage 20%, total floor area 40%, end quote. The purpose of this proposed reg amendment is to establish new lot coverage and floor area maximums for a university use in the R3 zoning district. Specifically, proposed regulation increases the permitted coverage for a university in the R3 zone from 15% to 20% and increases the total permitted floor area ratio, again, for a university in the R3 zone from 30% to 40%. I will review the legal test for an amendment of the zoning regulations in my summation. But at this point, I would note that the purpose of this proposed text amendment is to enable the continued university efforts to house students on campus, which has a demonstrated value to the students themselves. In addition, this regulation amendment, by encouraging the housing of students on campus, satisfies the express preference of the students, and even more so their families, to have their children on campus. In addition, the provision of housing on campus removes students from residential neighborhoods. Lastly, the construction of residential housing on campus reduces traffic to the campus by students who would otherwise live off-campus." Present proposed coverage on campus, present building coverage on campus is 14.0%. And the construction of the proposed North Dorm would bring the coverage to 17.38% in excess of the currently permitted 15%. Similarly, the floor area ratio at present is 30.23%, permitted by variance to exceed the existing regulation of 30%. And with the North Dorm constructed, would be 33.53% in excess of the presently permitted 30%. In essence, the existing regulations would not permit any further residential housing to be constructed on the Park Avenue campus, including the proposed North Dorm in the absence of this regulation amendment approval. The commission has also received a copy of a conceptual university master plan for the Park Avenue campus, which will be further explained by Kevin Herrick, the project architect, in his presentation. The conceptual master plan is essentially a wish list of possible future campus development, which would provide for various improvements on campus, including additional residential housing. Bottom line, if that wish list were to be approved by the commission in the distant future, the building coverage upon completion of the master plan would be 18.4% consistent with the new proposed coverage regulation of 20%. And the building floor area would be 40% on the nose, if you will, with the proposed floor area ratio regulation of 40%. This master plan analysis demonstrates the possible future evolution of the Park Avenue campus permitted by the proposed increase in coverage and proposed increase in floor area. Of course, any future development on the Park Avenue campus is subject to the review of the Plan and Zoning Commission through the special exception process. The companion application before the commission tonight is the special exception application for the North Dorm. By way of background, the university has, by virtue of various approvals, including those from the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, has completely transformed the former Jewish home for the elderly property into a handsome upper quad. The university renovated the existing five-story Bennett Building on the southerly portion and is reusing the Bennett Building as a residence hall. In addition, two mirror residence halls were constructed as part of the creation of a separate open space comprising the upper quad. An amphitheater was constructed in the easterly portion of the premises adjacent to the mirror residential halls. This amphitheater-residence hall combination serves as a connection from the existing Sacred Heart University quad on the east to the newly constructed quad on the University Upper Campus to the west. Subsequently, the P&amp;Z also approved a special exception application for two additional residence halls, known as Buildings A and B, on the upper campus quad in April of 2019, followed by in May of 19, a special exception application for Building C, which includes a dining hall for 240 students. The special exception application before the commission tonight pertains to the construction of an additional residence hall adjacent to the upper quad called the North Dorm Freshman Housing, also known to me as Buildings 7 and 8. This residence hall will be utilized for freshman housing and is located to the north of Building C that I just referenced. Proposed North Dorm Freshman Housing rounds out the upper quad housing development on the main campus of Sacred Heart. Two three-story buildings are connected by a bridge at the third floor. Below the bridge is a shared entry portico with Gothic arched openings. You will hear more about the design from Kevin Herrick. The buildings are a total of 133,626 square feet with 484 beds provided in 115 four-bedroom suites known as quads, as well as 12 two-bedroom rooms known as doubles. Each quad and each double include a bathroom. The buildings also provide a shared lounge and lounge and kitchenette on each floor, as well as small group study rooms. As part of this project, to maintain appropriate on-campus parking and to offset any displaced parking spaces where the residence halls will be built, a single-story parking deck will be constructed to the north, mimicking the curved walls of the building and the shape of the existing surface parking below. In total, 219 parking spaces will be provided, including 11 accessible spaces. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Herrick. Kevin is an architect with the SLAM Collaborative. He's head of the SLAM Education Practice Section. The SLAM Collaborative has offices in Glastonbury, Connecticut. Kevin.
Thanks, Bill. I'm gonna I think I'm gonna share my screen here. Can I just get a confirmation that you're seeing the full screen?
Confirmed.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see some new faces. Thanks, Bill, for the introduction. We're gonna begin with showing you a site plan of the current condition. You see here the recently completed let me turn on my pointer. Recently completed Pioneer Village in the center of your screen. This essentially completed the master plan from 2015. Now the university is looking forward to the next steps in examining how to remain competitive in an already competitive marketplace, as well as to continue to improve the culture and physical character of the campus. This next step, which is the immediate priority, is to continue on the strategic move to increase housing on campus. It's noted in red. This building's focus on underclassmen housing. This North Dorm will offer mini-suite housing similar to Tassant Hall and the recently completed Calcutta Hall. Mini-suites are essentially two-bed bedrooms that share a common bathroom. All other common facilities are down the hall or across the quad, meaning if you want to go and you don't have, meaning you don't have a kitchen, cooking facilities, or an apartment, or it's not a suite either. This is really designed to encourage underclassmen, especially freshmen, to meet as many other new people as they possibly can, meaning that they have to actually get up and out of their bedroom to socialize, to eat, to dine, to study, things like this. We find this to be a very successful way to encourage new relationships. Many of you may know that the number-one reason that students select a college is their perception of residential life and what it'll feel like to live on campus. Now, parents have a slightly broader perspective on that, but it does demonstrate how important these kind of facilities are. There's a number of studies that show the important relationships on campus or how important relationships are to the success of a college experience. In fact, a 15-year research project that was done by Daniel Chambliss at the Hamilton College proved that relationships created in college is the sole common denominator that people use when describing a successful college experience. This paper went on to explain that the importance of creating the right kind of residence halls for freshmen is paramount in establishing new interact, as many new interactions and meetings as possible. This kind of housing design is one that will encourage as many, I'll say, serendipitous collisions as possible with new students. Now, this is, we actually, for this purpose of this conversation, will call this North Dorm or the North Residence Hall. It's an extension of the Pioneer Village that has recently been completed. This much longer-range plan anticipates a few other things. And I'm gonna actually circle with my pen here so that you can follow along. So really, in no particular order of priorities, you see an expansion to the Pitt Center. This is not meant for increasing any kind of competition venues, but rather to improve the athlete's experience for academic success, their lockers, team rooms, a fitness center. You see here an expansion to the Recreation Center. This is planned to be a 25-yard natatorium for both recreation and competition swimming. And then three potential projects in the northeast corner of campus, one of which actually will sit on top of the current footprint for Milady Hall. Many of you may know that master plans are intended to provide a physical framework, which is really a response to the strategic initiatives of any institution. It's not intended to be an exact program, but more of a flexible document that starts to act as, just as I said, a framework. You can see here in this three-dimensional view the three potential projects in the northeast corner. This one here on top of the Milady Hall footprint, which is an office administration building. Of course, the North Dorm or Underclassmen Housing, the expansion to the Rec Center, the Natatorium, and then expansion to the Pitt Center for team rooms, locker areas, and fitness space as well. Zooming in on the North Residence Hall, you can see in this diagram or picture the existing site condition as it stands today. You see that the Gainos Drive was improved with a security booth that checks people into campus. You also see that I think traffic was improved in the neighborhood by creating this connection to the former Jewish home property to the main 5151 Park Avenue site. You see here the, at the bottom of the screen here is actually the Building C with the dining hall. And you see the arc of parking that has been there since the Jewish home, since the campus took over the Jewish home property. As we go into this next image, you'll see no development is planned to come closer to Jefferson. This particular diagram is showing a one-story deck or a single parking deck on top of the existing surface parking lot. You see that the entrance points from Gainos Drive into the deck or from main campus to the east. There is no intended traffic really to go in between the new dorm and Building C. However, there is a fire truck access lane for emergency purposes that will come through. This was recently approved in a modification by the state. This is also a drive that will be used on move-in day for moving the students luggage and furniture in and out of the dorms. Some interesting things here is that, to note, is that from this previous diagram that I showed you to this one, there's actually no increase in impervious surface. And you see the developments of some rain gardens in the inner courtyard to help with stormwater management.
Mr. Herrick?
Yes.
This is expected to be freshman dormitories?
Primarily, it wouldn't surprise me if some sophomores end up in here as well, but primarily freshmen, yes.
Okay, and I remember Sacred Heart, I believe, saying freshmen would not have cars with, allowed cars on campus. What do you expect the parking lot to service if it's next to the freshman dorm?
Essentially, it's the same, we're just, we're just replacing the current parking that's right there. So everything that students park there to either come to class, students park there if they're living in Pioneer Village as upperclassmen, you know, access to the ball fields, whatever it may be.
Okay, and it's currently, you said it's currently used by just anybody in the campus, as you said, other students or faculty or, okay.
So this particular image is not current. It's actually from 2015 when the Jewish home, the assisted living complex, was still, was still there. You see here the former Kurianski Building, which has been taken down. And essentially, this dorm is gonna sit on top of that footprint. And you're actually gonna see this surface lot is the one that gets the parking deck put on top of it. lot is the one that gets the parking deck put on top of it. So, I put them side by side. I, you know, did the best I could to kind of show up what it was like in 2015. So, the view on the left shows the two proposed buildings. Actually, one building with a bridge, so technically by code, it's a single building. Just above that, you can see what we call Upper Quad or Pioneer Village. I'll give you a little update on what's going on there later. Upper Quad, it does accommodate about nine hundred beds in apartments and suites with some mini-suites. This project will add about four hundred and eighty beds to that complement and primarily be dedicated for freshmen. All the beds, which will be mini-suite configuration, as I mentioned, really, that just means that there's four beds that share their own dedicated bathroom. This building will continue to allow the university to minimize off-campus alternative housing, limiting traffic, provide a better student experience, and get more students with closer to the amenities like recreation, dining, and other social activities. This particular view is up above the current dining hall, which you see in the foreground right here, that is now open, and you see the fire access, which is described disguised... I'm sorry, disguised as a pedestrian walkway sixteen feet wide. You see no other vehicular traffic except in move-in day would be allowed to... Would be encouraged to go in between the buildings. You get a sense that although this is not gonna be off the main quad, the freshman housing will get its own outdoor space, which we think is important, an important complement. Here's a sort of a ground-level view of the walkways. We anticipate mimicking the exterior materials of Upper Quad with brick veneer, synthetic slate roofing, similar roof pitches, similar fenestration patterns. We see it... Really see this as an extension of Upper Quad. Pedestrian-friendly, think it's warm and welcoming. This walk will also provide access for emergencies and move-in day, as I mentioned. Moving a little closer to the entrance to the dorm, you can see sort of these pleasant Gothic arches, which allow direct access into the outdoor courtyard, and at the same time, doors into the West Building and East Building are accessed undercover. So, this aerial view is going back to 2015 as well, and obviously, much has happened over the last decade. You can see the dorm that has been constructed for a while on the corner of Park and Jefferson is obviously just beginning construction in this particular view. But if we zoom in further on that image, you can see when the Jewish home was there, you can see the Kurianski Building to the north. But what I think is arguably one of the biggest transformations for a campus in America, this particular campus, if you haven't heard, has been voted the number-four most beautiful campus on the East Coast by College Magazine. I think that recognition has a lot to do with the development of Pioneer Village. This development has created a much-needed residential green space, which has become iconic and ever-so-popular with the students. If you haven't had a chance to walk the site, please do. I think you'll see why the campus was recognized by College Magazine as it was this past year. This commission has heard me state, or at least people that have been seeing these projects, seen us come with these projects prior, have heard me state that this project would create a heart to the campus, which this... I think this image really supports. It's really more kind of a reverse planning in terms of college collegiate campus planning, if you think about it. Most times, a more formal, traditional quad is the start of a campus development and expands outwards with more contemporary buildings. In this case, with the opportunity that the Jewish home property brought to the campus, we kind of did that in reverse, where now this campus core looks like it's been here for a century, but it really is the most new... It's the newest aspect of the campus. Really, the intent of these next few slides is to give you a... An idea of the character of the freshman housing that we're proposing. Really, as I mentioned, we see this as an extension of Pioneer Village, and although I think we've gotten pretty good in our profession at renderings, I think it's hard to beat actual photos, and it's pretty rare that you get a chance to say, "We're looking to continue buildings that were most recently completed." I'm sorry. So, you can start to see here the collegiate Gothic architectural influences. Here in Weasel and Frisetti Halls, which are nicknamed the Twins, you see the bridge, which marks one of the main entrances into the green quadrangle. You get a sense here of kind of the things that make it pedestrian-friendly, the punched windows, the slate-like pitched roofs, the Gothic arches are all things that play into, I think, a tremendous transformation on campus. In Bowman Hall, which houses the dining facility for Pioneer Village, and although we typically don't go inside buildings for presentations like this, I actually can't resist, this here has become my personal and professional favorite interior space. So, here's a peek inside that two-hundred-student dining hall, which is obviously lots of window... Look, has tremendous amount of daylight going and views out to the main quadrangle. This particular dining hall will serve the freshman housing that we're describing today and is shown in this image here. So, this last image here that I have for tonight hopefully communicates why this building is important to the culture of the university, that the intent is to continue the character of Pioneer Village. So, thank you for this time. I'll turn it back to Attorney Fitzpatrick, and I'll be available for questions after he closes.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Thomas Daley. Mr. Daley's a professional engineer with SLR Consulting, which prepared the drainage report, which has been submitted, and designed the storm drainage system. SLR Consulting has offices in Cheshire, Connecticut. Tom?
Attorney Fitzpatrick. May I just ask if any commission members have questions for Mr. Herrick?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Braun?
I'm just looking through your application materials. Is there a wetlands permit that was issued for this? Because I don't see one in the package. I see a draft certificate of wetlands conformance.
I see... Yeah. The certificate of wetlands conformance is the approval for this dorm.
I don't see one that's been approved. I only see a draft that's not signed by anyone.
They... We don't end up signing those drafts until we get through zoning and need to process it. It's been published. The appeal period is run. I just haven't executed it yet because I don't have full approval at this point.
From the Conservation Commission?
From zoning.
Well, doesn't somebody from Conservation have to sign off on their permit?
The certificate of wetlands... Let me rephrase. The certificate of wetlands conformance is ready to be issued. If I walked in the door and signed it and paid whatever I need to pay, it is issued. It's been approved. The draft has been drawn by the staff, given to me, published. The fifteen-day appeal period is run. It's legal. All it needs is me to go in and sign it off on the... At the counter. But I wouldn't do so until I have zoning approval, because it costs money.
So, this did not go to a hearing for the Wetlands Agency? This was done by the staff?
That's correct. There's no... There's no construction any closer to a regulated area than it presents.
And this is the draft that would be signed once you go to have it signed? There's no other inter... Update to this? This is the final version?
It is. The only thing that happens when I go in and sign it is it doesn't have draft printed on it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the commission? Mr. Daley?
Thank you. And for the record, as Bill indicated, my name is Tom Daley. I'm a principal engineer and a civil engineer with the firm of SLR. We have really had the pleasure to be part of this project since the beginning, really have enjoyed working with Kevin Herrick and his team, his landscape architectural team. But as the commission may recall, early, almost in the first phase of the Pioneer Village, we basically, holistically, took a look at the stormwater management system for the whole Jewish home. And in part of that application, we re... Basically rebuilt the stormwater ponds. We added stormwater quality vaults. We brought the stormwater basins and the stormwater management system up to town standards. So... And that those efforts, part of first phase, have allowed us to continue to come before this commission and provide professional testimony that we're still in good standing for that. As part of this application, the most critical element here was taking a look at impervious cover, as that is primarily the driver for our stormwater management design. We're not changing the watershed areas. Water is still going down towards the stormwater basin. We're not incorporating new areas. So, we worked very closely with Kevin Herrick and his team to the point where, after many, many back and forths and doing very micro calculations, it is our professional opinion, and Kevin indicated, same for his firm, that there is no increase in impervious coverage. So, that's the real driver in terms of stormwater management. In addition to that, going what Bill was just talking about, is we are not making any impacts on the stormwater basins that were installed and constructed and regulated through the Wetlands Commission with the earlier phases. So, with that, we have provided information to the town in terms of no increase in runoff and no increase in impervious. I believe you should have in the packet a letter from the Fairfield Engineering Department as associated with the code review, where they concurred with our findings. So, with that, I would say on the record, it's my professional opinion as a professional engineer, that this application before you will have no negative impact or no change on the runoff or the water quality associated with the campus. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Tom.
Any member of the commission have questions for Mr. Daley? Commissioner Braun?
Are you... Are you familiar with SLR's role in managing the Conservation Department of the Town of Fairfield, which I believe was a continuing role, which continued when you started working on this application? I'm wondering if there's a conflict of interest?
We are familiar with the role, and we were very specific. We've had a longer role here. So, even when we took the role on for the wetland science... The wetland work, it was disclosed at that time, and I believe, my understanding is, SLR had no involvement in the review of this individual permit. That was done by other town staff in Town Hall.
Except the other town staff was under the guidance of SLR because SLR... Because the Conservation Department had no wetlands review person, and the person that was there, I believe, was being trained by SLR during the spring and summer of 2021. So, I'm a little bit... I just can't believe the same company that's involved in the managing of our staff, the same people that are issuing a certificate of conformance that did not go before the Wetlands Agency, is the same engineering firm that's supporting the applicant on this application. I don't understand how that could happen. I would like to hear from the Conservation Department to explain if SLR had any input at all in the certificate of conformance that was issued?
I can confirm for the record that I never met with Megan from SLR, who was the person working in Conservation. I met only with Sarah Neefsey, with Tim Bishop, and I know that Sarah Neefsey consulted with Tim Herbst, acting as town council relative to inland wetlands.
I would like to hear... I would like to hear from the Conservation Department as to who exactly reviewed this certificate of conformance and who signed it, and whether SLR was involved in guiding, training, or managing that individual at any point in time since they got involved with this project. Otherwise, I don't trust the certificate of wetlands conformance.
Well, with all due respect, we are fully knowledgeable of the potential conflict of interest, and we identified it since day one. We would never jeopardize, one, our own firm's reputation, nor this application, and I can put on the record that our staff provided no guidance or input associated with this application.
And have an application for that department?
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. Maybe we need guidance from town council on this matter?
Oh, yeah. I mean, we're gonna need... Yes. I think that the answer is yes, because I don't... I'm not too familiar with exactly how this is going, so we're gonna need... We'll follow up with our staff with Conservation and talk to town council if needed. Well, we will talk to town council.
The information that's available says there are wetlands on site, there's regulated area on site. All we have is a certificate of conformance, which was unsigned but drafted by someone that I'm aware was in training by SLR last spring and summer, and that's the timeframe that SLR began working on this project, or maybe even before that. So, again, wearing two hats is very difficult.
Okay. I think Commissioner Harrison had a question, but I don't see that she is... Commissioner Harrison, are you there? When she comes back on, we'll let her ask. Any other... Either from Attorney Fitzpatrick or Mr. Daley, any other... Anything else to add with this issue brought up by Commissioner Braun?
Just to... Just to repeat...
Hold on. Hold on. Attorney Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
To repeat, Mr. Chairman, I handled this certificate of wetlands conformance. I did not deal... I know who worked from SLR in that Conservation Office. It was Megan. I forget her last name. I worked with her on various files. I did not work with her on this file in any way, shape, or form, because I knew that we had a long stand... The university had a longstanding relationship with SLR and their predecessor, Malone and McBroom. And as a result, I would not permit that to take place. There was not even a chance for it to take place. I met only with Sarah Neefsey, and I believe at the end with Tim Bishop, and I know that Sarah Neefsey consulted with Tim Herbst, acting as town attorney to the Inland Wetland Commission.
Okay. And I appreciate that.
There's no... There's no SLR involved.
I appreciate that, Attorney Fitzpatrick. We can go, hopefully, pretty quickly to Attorney Herbst to follow up and get any confirmation or follow up to do more analysis, see if anything else is needed. Attorney Harrison... Excuse me. Commissioner Harrison, you had a question?
I did. I just... I appreciate all this, and I would like to get insights as well from the town councils. Can we leave this public hearing open until we have those definitive answers about any conflict of interest?
We may... Well, we can... We'll talk about it at the end. We may do that, or we can get the additional information after we close, but keeping it open could be possible, yes. Let's talk about it.
There's no statutory... There's no... Yeah. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
It's... It's the Jewish home... Can you explain to me? Maybe I missed something in the presentation. Has there already been something built on this site, and now you're supplementing it with new buildings? Or you're... Is this the first thing you're building on the Jewish home site? I'm trying to envision it. It's on a very high hill, and is this going to tower over neighboring properties? Or was there already something there that is not as tall as what you're building? I'm trying to figure out what the impact is on whatever is next door, whether it's... I can't tell what it is that's next door on the other side.
This is the one, two, three, four, the sixth building built and approved by your commission on the Jewish home site. At the southerly end, the Bennett Building, we kept, the university kept, and kept the Jewish home for the elderly building and rehabbed it and uses it for residential housing. There was a four-story building at the northerly end in very much in the area where this building is proposed, and that was brought down and taken down. So, this... There's a... This will be the one, two, three... I believe the seventh new building on the Jewish home property, and it will be at the northerly end. It's in essentially the same location where there was a four-story building. This is going to be a three-story building.
Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Attorney Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Michael Galante of Hardesty and Hanover, who produced the traffic memorandum, which was distributed to the commission. and Hanover, who produced the traffic memorandum which was distributed to the commission. Hardesty and Hanover has offices in Norwalk, Connecticut. Michael?
Yeah, Michael Galante, Hardesty and Hanover. We prepared a letter for the commission dated February 2nd of this year, which is really an overview traffic evaluation of the construction of the 480-bed dormitories for the, mostly for freshmen for Sacred Heart University. And as mentioned by multiple people tonight, the concept by the university for many years now was to bring students on campus and not living off campus at various places, whether it's in Fairfield, Bridgeport, or Trumbull, and bring these students into the campus and in this case with the freshman students, then are bringing cars. So, from a traffic perspective, we, we feel very strongly that we're reducing traffic on area roads by not having students drive from home to the campus and potentially back and forth during the day, but being on campus and having the experience of living on campus with all the amenities. Keep in mind, the Jewish home was removed several years ago over a period of time, but that generated 250 vehicles during an afternoon peak hour, for example. So, that traffic's been removed. Yes, the Jewish home has been rebuilt on Park Avenue down in Bridgeport, but from this location, Jefferson Street and so on, that traffic on these driveways now serving the university have, have been removed. So, the benefit here is that students are using or will continue to use the shuttle service that's providing transportation for students throughout the town and other adjacent towns. And from a traffic perspective, we think this is a benefit to reduce traffic overall. Keep in mind, right now, there has been construction traffic on area roads and that at some point will be eliminated when any construction is completed. And I'll, I'll certainly answer any questions, but it's obviously a very short traffic evaluation letter that we prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Any questions for the, any questions from the commission for Mr. Galante? Attorney Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I'd like to review the legal framework for these applications. First, I'd like to review the legal test for the granting of a text amendment set forth in the Roncari Industries case, 281 Connecticut, 66 of 2007 case, which states, "Acting in such legislative capacity, the local zoning board is free to amend its regulations whenever time, experience, and responsible planning or contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for change." End quote. I'd also note, I listened to Mr. Went outline the test earlier. He brings up the consistency, he brought up consistency with the master plan. As you'll hear, the university is specifically mentioned in the master plan. He's brought up the issue whether the level of development would promote undue traffic congestion, as you've heard from Mr. Galante, that will not be the case. And lastly, he brought up whether the proposed text amendment proposed the health, safety, and welfare of the town. Well, I think there's two primary points there. One, this is important to the university. The university is a very important member of the community and a very positive member of the community. And secondly, this proposal would take students out of neighborhoods, I think, and put them on campus. I think that can only be a benefit to the community. I submit the application before the commission satisfies the Roncari, Roncari test. Sacred Heart has the good fortune to have many students wishing to attend the university. The result is the need for additional housing. The students, their parents, and the university want these students on campus to be located on campus at Park Avenue, who affords the students ready access to dining, recreational facilities, classrooms, et cetera. There's a distinct social and educational benefit to having students on campus. As Mr. Herrick stated, on-campus residential housing provides students with lifelong friendships. In addition, the proposed regulation amendment by virtue of permitting residential housing takes many students and, it takes students in many cases out of residential neighborhoods. The commission has heard from the project architect, Kevin Herrick, outlining the conceptual future development of the Park Avenue campus. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the conceptual university master plan. The special exception application before the commission tonight requests approval versus one to section 27 of the regulations for construction of the proposed North Dorm. Mr. Herrick has outlined the details of the North Dorm proposal for the benefit of the commission. This application was reviewed by the Conservation Department and a certificate of wetland compliance was obtained. That approval has been made part of the application submission to this commission. This application was also the subject of an application to the zoning board of appeals pertaining to height, and that variance application was approved and the approval again has been made part of the submission to the commission. The detailed storm drainage plan and drainage report for this proposal were submitted to the Town of Fairfield Engineering Department and Laura Pully, the engineering department, reviewed and approved the proposed plan. The relevant factors for consideration by the commission in reviewing this special exception application are outlined in section 27.4 of the zoning regulations. Section 27.4.1 notes the proposal shall be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the town and the neighborhood and not discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent property. In this matter, I would submit the issue of harmony with the neighborhood and the town has essentially been settled. The use of the property by Sacred Heart University is decades old and has been recognized by this commission as well as the town plan of conservation and development. It's also self-evident that the proposed use here, construction of the North Dorm freshman housing, is an integral component of the university use. The second part of section 27.4.1, that the proposed use not hinder or discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent property, is again satisfied here by the fact that the university has existed on this site since 1963. And the additional proposed residential housing, located as it is on the existing campus as part of the new upper campus quad, results in minimal impact, if any, on the neighborhood in general. Commission has received the report and heard the testimony of Michael Galante confirming there will be no traffic impact from this proposal. The end result is that the proposed North Dorm, given the existing geographic boundaries of the campus, Jefferson Street to the north, Park Avenue to the east, Gerchild Wheeler Golf Course to the south and west, will have virtually no impact in the appropriate development and use of adjacent property. Section 27.4.2 is satisfied here since there is adequate access for fire protection, as you've heard from Mr. Herrick. The provisions of 27.4.3 relate to traffic. The proposed residential hall will house freshmen who are not permitted to have cars and by virtue of that fact will have no impact on traffic on campus other than the elimination of trips to and from the campus from those freshmen who would have lived off campus. Section 27.4.4 discusses landscaping. The proposed North Dorm is fully landscaped, as outlined in the plan submitted. Section 27.4.5 is satisfied since the university has existed on this property for over 50 years. The presence of the university is acknowledged in the town plan of conservation and development adopted by the town plan and zoning commission in the year 2016, and the proposed North Dorm constitutes an effective utilization of university resources. For the reasons I've outlined, I submit that the special exception application complies with the relevant zoning regulations and request this special exception application be approved. Sacred Heart is an integral part of the Town of Fairfield. The university has permitted, has participated in the redevelopment of downtown Fairfield through its sponsorship of the SHU Community Theater, providing concerts, movies, programs, et cetera. As a lifelong Fairfield resident, I was very pleased to see the university step up and participate in the reopening and refurbishment of the community theater. That theater is an important part of downtown Fairfield. The university also offers concerts, plays, art exhibits, et cetera, on the Park Avenue and the West campuses. The university has taken on the management of the Discovery Science Center and Planetarium on Park Avenue, providing new and updated exhibits and provision for field trips by students in all surrounding communities. The university has tracked its volunteer hours. The university volunteer hours for the 2020, 2021 academic year exceeded 100,000 hours. The university is partnering with the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Westport for a joint 911 emergency communication center on the Sacred Heart University campus. The university regularly places student teachers from its College of Education in Fairfield schools. In addition, the university community has a significant economic impact on the Town of Fairfield and the immediate area by virtue of university purchases and expenditures as well as student and visitor spending. Bottom line, approval of this regulation amendment and the accompanying special exception application will permit the university to continue to address the needs of its students and further its participation as a member of the surrounding communities. Mr. Mark Izzo, the Director of Facilities Management and Construction at Sacred Heart is on this call, and he and I, as well as the project architect, Kevin Herrick, project engineer, Tom Daley, and Michael Galante of Hardesty and Hanover would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. I have some questions for you or anybody on your team. This, I believe this is the first time we're seeing this new master plan from Sacred Heart?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you or anybody at Sacred Heart have an idea as to what, I remember he went, Mr. Herrick went through some of the buildings, but there were three buildings on what that were closely together? Were they expected to be residence buildings or were they kind of up in the air as to what their purposes would be?
I think those are, those were anticipated to be residential housing, Mr. Chairman, continuing with the same quest we're working on now.
As part of the master plan, does Sacred Heart envision an increase in student population? Undergraduate or graduate or both?
I, I think it's very difficult to predict the future, Mr. Chairman. The, the university has been very successful and the undergraduate enrollment has grown. And part of the reason for this dorm is they need to accommodate freshman housing. So, whether this, whether the growth will continue, it's very difficult to tell. But the university has grown, certainly over the last 10 years.
What's the current undergrad population?
Fifty-six seventy-one is the figure I have for 2020, Mr. Chairman. Five thousand six hundred and seventy-one.
You have what it was five or 10 years ago?
10 years ago, it was about 3,600 kids.
But this, I understand, you know, things can change and even getting more students now, but is there a plan from going from 5,600 to 7,500 or some material increase like that for undergraduate?
Perhaps Mr. Izzo can answer that question better than I can.
Hello, everybody. This is Mark Izzo. I'm the Vice President of Construction and Facilities for the university. I've, I've been here for the past 12 years and we did start off around 3,600 my first year here, and we are now, you know, eclipsed 5,800. We do not have plans to, to grow exponentially over the next 10 years. Truthfully, we don't have the land, we don't have the capacity, but I can't tell you if it's gonna go up 1,000 or so over the next 10 years. It's definitely possible.
Okay. What is, and this is for you or anybody, Mr. Izzo, what is the percentage of, let's just start with all the undergrad, because this is kind of a refresher. I think we went over this a while back, but for either new missionaries and more of a refresher for myself, what the percentage of undergraduates that are off campus as opposed to on campus?
So, I could tell you right, right now, we house 3178 freshmen and sophomores. And that, there's mixed in some juniors and seniors predicated on their needs.
I don't like doing, I don't, never liked doing public math, but it's a little over 50%.
Well, I, I'm gonna get to the other part of it. So, we have housing available on campus, 3138. So, that's pretty much, we can meet the freshman and sophomore classes.
Well, that was my next question was, are there currently freshmen that are off campus or are they all housed on campus?
They're required to stay on campus unless they're commuting.
Okay. So, which leads me, you're, this new dorm is expected to mostly be freshmen. I understand there's some sophomores, but mostly freshmen. Where are they coming from another dorm? What's, they're all on campus to begin with, where are they coming from?
The previous three dorms, or actually five dorms, comprise of three apartment style, which were intended for upperclassmen. So, we wanna like give our freshmen new housing, updated housing, that then the sophomores and juniors can move into the apartment style, so we could have more of a community within that Pioneer Gardens.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Commissioner Braun?
The aerial views you are showing, I, I don't see them in the material. Is it in the material or can you email it to us so we can take a look at it? I'm trying to, I'm having trouble picturing this in relation to the surrounding area in both height and distance from, you know, whoever lives on the other side of this development and what's there already. Can you put that aerial view back up again that you showed earlier?
Attorney Fitzpatrick, can you have that PowerPoint submitted as part of the record if it hasn't already been done so?
And could you pull it up on the screen again so I could look at it? And I'm curious, where the, I, I need to have you point out where the parking structure is, because is it a deck or is it something that's elevated higher up in relation to Jefferson Street and the building? The building is like a semicircle? Where's the parking structure in relation to the building? Okay, that's good. That's a good start.
So, there's a few aerials in here. Can, I don't know if, I, I don't know if I'm zoomed in. I don't, these are so small, you can't tell me which slide. Can you tell me which slide?
Maybe just go through them, maybe just go through.
Go up, please. Mr. Herrick, go up. I suspect you're gonna wanna see maybe numbers five or six. Commissioner Braun?
Probably.
Okay.
That's existing.
That's existing right now.
Yeah.
Proposed.
And where's Jefferson Street on the other side of the half circle?
Yes. Let me give you a better one for that. Oops. So, Park is at the bottom of the screen. Jefferson is up here. Here's the former Kurianski Building.
And what again is the Kurianski Building?
That's the building that was demoed in 2015 or 16 as part of the Jewish home, what that was part of the assisted living complex.
Okay. And, okay, now I have it on my other screen that's bigger. So, point out again where the new development is going on this, that's Park Avenue, so this is way in the back on the right?
Uh, yeah, and I can.
Oh, those two square buildings? Is it up where those two square buildings are?
Right here. Do you see the red mark?
No, oh, I see it, okay. So, those buildings exist now and?
No, 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 no. Nope, that, this is the 2015 image.
Okay. Are those Jewish home buildings?
The one that's circled, yes. It was.
That came down and what you're putting?
I'll, I'll make a bigger circle. This was the Jewish home property.
And the buildings to the left and the parking and all the driveways and all that, that's, those are Sacred Heart buildings? Those are not Jewish home buildings back there on the left?
Let me, let me zoom in, that might help. So, this is the 2015 image. This building, you're gonna see when I go to the current condition, was, was, was demoed and so was this building. This building that I'm circling was renovated as, by Sacred Heart. So, that building that I just circled in was renovated is right here.
And the three new dorms that we have already built on this parcel, where are they here? Or did I mishear that?
Two, three, four, five.
So which buildings exist today and which buildings are you proposing? Or these all exist?
These are, these are all there now.
Okay. These are current buildings.
Correct.
And is it possible to show, is there an arrow that shows this and then the location of where the new building is going?
The one rendering I have will, I'll, I'll, I'm going to show, I'll, I'll basically put the camera right where the X is and you'll see, I'll, I'll call out this dining facility because it's kind of a memorable sort of thing to, to recognize.
And just?
So right here, so that dining hall is, is in the lower, oops, sorry, the lower left right here. So all?
And the new building is the semicircle building on the right.
Oh, yep. All of this exists.
Okay.
Exactly right.
And Jefferson is out to the right. Now the park, what is the parking portion of this? I see a parking lot. Is there an elevated parking garage or no?
Just the, a single deck on top of the existing lot. That's right. You can get a glimpse of it right here, but that site plan showed it completely that we first started on.
And the dorm building is how, what's the, what's the height of the dorm building?
It's three, three stories.
So how many feet is that?
Uh, Bill, what's our height, fifty?
I think we got a variance to forty-eight feet, Kevin.
Forty-eight, yeah, okay.
So that will be forty-eight feet above grade and this is on top of hills. Is there an issue with towering over neighboring properties? I don't know where the neighboring properties are. It's hard to tell. And also the wetlands?
Which direction is the building there?
Pardon me?
There's a four-story building there.
Yeah, I can't picture what it used to look like. I know I've been to the Jewish home, but I can't remember what it used to look like. There were a lot of buildings there. Where's the, yeah, where are the wetlands? Yeah, in Marin, yeah.
Let me go to the side-by-side image for you that I think might help. So if we pause here, this on the right circle, you can see the, the 2015 image. So this is the Kurianski Building. See the swooping arc right here for the, for the parking? Like it looks like a smile. That's the exact footprint of this right here.
And so there was parking there in the old building as well? Is that what that semicircle is?
That's correct. It was there before. It's there today and we're going to put a deck on top of it. Well, we're proposing to put a deck on top of it.
And can you tell me where the wetlands are in relation to this? I know that it's very close to some kind of wetland. I, I saw it on one of the maps, but they're awfully hard to read because the print is so small.
Wetlands are between the parking and Jefferson Street.
Kevin, can you show, you had an aerial photograph of the existing conditions that you could see the stormwater basin and?
Yep.
Sorry, there it is.
Yeah, sorry, I went, yep, too fast. Yep, sorry, go ahead.
This is a great photograph. So if you look up in the upper, so you have the arcing, once again, it's Tom Daley for the record with SLR, you'll see the arcing of the, the parking. If you look up over in the right, Kevin, if you can draw that circle, you can see the darker area. The wetlands on site that are regulated are actually a stormwater detention basin built for this project. So that's, that's it. There's, the natural wetlands, there, I don't believe there is any natural wetlands in this area. There is just two stormwater basins that are regulated by the Wetlands Commission.
I appreciate that explanation.
Next, if you go to the next screen, well, as Kevin indicated, we're not encroaching any farther. So that red line he drew there is, you asked how close we are? That's, that's where we are.
That's where you were. Is that staying, that's staying in the same place?
Yeah, that, that limited disturbance is, is the same exact location. The buildings, the parking garage basically is going on top of the existing parking lot. So the limited disturbance is the same.
It'd be great if you could send us this. That'd be great.
Okay.
Attorney Fitzpatrick, has this PowerPoint been made part of the record?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman. Would be happy to do so.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I, I have one other question. The, the fact that the, the trap, there was no real traffic study done, is that premise mostly on the fact that you're anticipating all freshmen who will not be using many cars, although there are spaces for 219 cars? I assume some of those are staff, some of those are freshmen, but in the future, there's no guarantee that there won't be other, other, other people living there than freshmen, right? I mean, we can't predict the future.
The best of my knowledge, this dorm is designed for occupancy by freshmen. Certainly the university will always want the freshmen and sophomores on campus and it has the, the ability to prohibit them from having cars. And that's what the university does today. That's what the university plans on doing in the future. And that's why the traffic report is, is just a memorandum because there will be literally less traffic generated by this building than is the case today.
Why would there be less traffic than today for adding a dorm?
Because freshmen who live off campus and drive to and from the campus would now be on campus and not have cars.
And the 219 spaces, those will be used by some freshmen, I assume, that will be allowed to have cars?
Well, they're, they're used at present, we are basically reproducing by virtue of construction of the dorm, we're reproducing essentially the same parking that exists there today.
And it will be used by freshmen who have cars, obviously, or somebody, or who else will be using the parking lot.
That can be used by any, I, I can't predict uses a lot, but if you're a freshman on campus, you can't have a car.
Okay, I understand.
If you're a freshman off campus, you probably need a car and you'll drive to and from the campus.
Thank you.
Not the case if you're on campus. You've got to shuttle down the GE, the West Campus, you've got to shuttle downtown, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Attorney Fitzpatrick, just to be clear though, freshmen are currently on campus. So it's less that you're pulling freshmen from off campus as opposed to relocating the freshmen and pulling other students back on campus.
To the extent we grow the freshman class, Mr. Chairman, there'll be no more freshmen on campus.
Okay, fair enough.
There was a hundred and ninety-five freshman increase from last year's fall class to this year's fall class.
How long for the master plan, the 2015 lasted, I guess, I'll assume seven years? Is there an expectation of how long this master plan will last?
Mr. Izzo, do you have any guess?
I mean, right now we're just looking at building seven and eight and we're potentially looking at doing something with the Pitt Center. Those are, those are the future goals for the university.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Francis?
How many undergraduate commuter students do you have?
I'm going to be honest with you, I, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. Because there's a gap of twenty-six hundred students. I just wondered how many of them are on campus and?
Again, the freshman, freshman and sophomore class combined is thirty-one seventy-eight. We have fifty-eight hundred students. So there's juniors and seniors that live off campus in the neighborhoods and surrounding apartments, et cetera. There are some seniors or south or juniors and seniors living on campus. I don't have those figures. But freshman and sophomore is thirty-one seventy-eight.
With thirty-one, thirty-eight bits?
Correct. Hence, hence why.
Even the freshmen and sophomores can't be.
Correct.
There must be a lot of kids living here off campus. Wow. I mean, some of them are commuters, probably a few hundred. So got a couple of thousand kids off. I, I didn't realize it was that many.
The last time I checked, it was over three hundred for commuters.
Oh, is that all?
Yes.
Wow.
That does not account for graduates.
No, no. Well, that's a good ratio, but lots of off-campus residents, I see. All right. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Attorney Fitzpatrick, anything else before public comment?
Nothing at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Nope. Mr. Chair? Move on to public comments. I understand there is a signup list. I'll let Ms. Herrigan get to that in a second. Any member of the public wish to be heard? I believe most have probably signed up in chat. If you haven't done so, please do so. We will go through that list and I will make an announcement if anybody else needs, has not signed up and wants to be heard. Please just give us your name, your address. You'll have as much time as you would like. Just keep your comments relevant to the application. Ms. Herrigan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, we have Mark Anthony Galucci, followed by Scott Air.
Yeah, Hour.
Thank you. Mr. Galucci? Mr. Galucci, if you're speaking, you're on mute right now. I don't, I see your screen, but not your video and you're on mute. Mr. Galucci?
Hour and then circle back around if that's more convenient.
I think that makes sense. Mr. Hour?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Scott Hour, I live at 288 Jefferson Street, which I'm the closest person than anybody else in this meeting to where the proposed construction is. There's one house between Donna Drive and Notre Dame Catholic High School and that's me on the, on the north side of Jefferson Street. Couple of, couple of items. I'm not convinced about the traffic, no, no impact on the traffic. Yes, I understand freshmen are not allowed to have cars and so forth, but you had said that there's freshmen on campus already, so presumably they're going to move to this new building as well as some of the ones that are going to come from off campus. So then that means you're going to have existing dorm space that say sophomores, juniors, seniors who can have cars then can move on campus thereby increasing the traffic flow. Now maybe, maybe Jefferson Street will flow more, will flow more easily, but you're creating a much more hazardous situation at the, at the intersection of Notre Dame, Geno Drive and Jefferson Street. And I can tell you at least once a month, there's been a serious accident and in fact, one time overnight, one of Fairfield's finest was seriously injured. And the only reason I know all of this is because I live diagonally across the street from it. Plus with the, in the case of the traffic, you're assuming people are going to use the shuttle bus. Now I understand freshmen probably would have to, but the, the upperclassmen to go to and from the West Campus, for example, or wherever else they need to go. It's, you're creating a bottleneck and there doesn't seem to be any, anything to relieve the bottleneck like in the plan, whether it be a, a traffic light or a stop signs and speeding is a big problem on Jefferson Street. Now to be fair, I understand not, it's not all the students that are, you know, are guilty of these traffic violations, but there's quite a bit. So to say, to say, oh yeah, there's no, there's no traffic impact, this seems to be, to be incorrect. And, and related to that, and I know there's not too much that you can do about it, but my property has essentially become an open-air litter bin from anybody that drives by. Again, I understand that's not necessarily all Sacred Heart students and staff, but I've noticed an increase since the, since the building of the Martir Center back in 2014. And anybody who, who tries to traverse Jefferson Street between one and two or around five o'clock, it's nearly impossible for people to get out of their driveways if they're heading towards Bridgeport. So you already have that congestion and to say that there's not going to be any additional just doesn't, doesn't make sense. I mean, I know myself, I've nearly gotten hit several times from students turning out of Geno's Drive, which again, I realize you can't control that, but statistically speaking, if you have more vehicles present, there's going to be a greater chance. So that's one item. The second item, which is sort of related, is there's been construction going on since at least 2014, maybe even a little earlier and, you know, the residents here are getting a little tired of hearing the backup alarms of the trucks and all the commotion. It's, you know, I'm just wondering what that's going to do to property values because it's, you know, it's, it's almost like a steelworks over there for, for most of the time. Admittedly, it has quieted down a little bit since you finished the, your maintenance facility, which is right across the street from me. And the, you know, the, the Martir Center, but now with these new buildings, you know, it's going to start up again. Another thing that I noticed is there were various environmental concerns brought about, but there was nothing about light pollution. There is a lot of lights on campus there and I, quite frankly, I wouldn't be surprised if you could see the campus from outer space. And you know, the, the lights I'm looking at right now across the street, they're not completely aimed downward. You can see them from the side. And now with you putting this new deck up, I'm presuming that's going to be lit too. And there's no, there's no lighting indicated in any of your drawings, but I'm assuming for safety, you would have those, those lights there. They're going to be higher and they're going to be causing more.
I think we might have lost him.
You think so? Mr. Hour, he's still there?
Yeah, sorry, I hit the, I hit the mute button. I exited on the, on the screen. So I was talking about the light pollution. The, the buildings, buildings all have lights, more or less, that do not, that, that, that do not shine predominantly down. So that creates a problem for, for wildlife. For example, the circadian rhythm of, of all the birds is messed up because I hear them, you know, in two, three o'clock in the morning chirping as if it were dawn in the summer. And studies have been shown that when the circadian rhythm of the birds is disrupted, they tend to lay eggs with thinner shells, which of course causes problems for their population as you have more birds that, that don't survive. And also all of this development has caused a lot of deer to be, and, and a lot of other wildlife that wasn't constantly traversing Jefferson Street as, as much as it is now. But that's, that's another thing that I, that I noticed. It, it just, it just doesn't seem to be talked about at all. So, yeah, so I, I, that's pretty much all I had, I, I had to say at, at this point. So I'm just not convinced with some of the facts and figures that were put forth by, by the presenters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hour. Mr. Galucci? Mr. Galucci, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, so my name is Mark Anthony Galucci and I live at 279 Weepin Wellow Lane. And I first started living here in 1962 before the university came about, before Notre Dame, before the Jewish home, before General Electric, before anything. And so I, I probably am the only one on the phone tonight who could say that. When we look at this project, the issue is not whether Sacred Heart University is, is good for our community, whether it's enhancing our community, whether the students are doing volunteer work or any of that. I mean, all of that is true. We can concede that. So it has been an asset. That's not the issue here. The issue here is what kind of impact is this further development of the campus going to do to this area of Fairfield? And we want to look at traffic. We want to look at environmental. We want to look at possible flooding and things of that nature. And I agree with the previous speaker about some of the environmental things and I can tell you this, because I've been here since 1962, just west of Gaino- Just west of Geno's Drive was a brook. And that brook used to go through a cover under Jefferson Street. It would come out um, just on the west side of Donna Drive, down the hill there, where there's a house there. And that house didn't exist then, and that was a pond with a waterfall. And that particular area of, of land was designated to be a local neighborhood park. Because Fairfield's master plan way back then was that every neighborhood was gonna have a park. And uh, we never got our park because uh, then there was the taxpayers' rebellion and in the early seventies. And the town started revisiting its priorities and they sold off the land and a house was built there. And somehow, the pond was filled in and the brook was put in the cover underground there. And the water still does come out. Um, on the other side, Weeping Willow, towards the Parkway, where eventually it joins the river. I only point this out because clearly, there was a lot of water run out in a brook. On the property alongside Geno Drive. And when the Jewish Home had come along, the visible brook and the visible waterfall disappeared. Because they did some kind of construction and fill and stuff. So I'd be concerned about some development there without anyone taking a look and see. What kind of excess water might be coming off the property, since now there will be a lot less surface area for that water to go through and be absorbed. And I'd be concerned about it running down the hill onto Jefferson Street. And causing icy conditions in the wintertime with that water on the street. I also can say that through the years, the traffic has gotten worse and worse. It's been said repeatedly at many hearings here before this board and other boards, that Jefferson Street is the main conduit. Um, when you're trying to travel from Stratfield Road to Eastern Turnpike up to Park Avenue. You have to go all the way down to Wilson Street and, and Twoson Hill Road before you get another conduit. And it's also the bypass road that's used by people on the Mirror Parkway. Whenever there's an accident or a severe backup, everybody gets off at exit forty-seven or exit forty-six. Depending on whether they're going north or south, and they come onto Jefferson Street. So the traffic conditions are already pretty bad. The comment made that this has no impact on traffic because freshmen are gonna live there, not allowed to have cars is. I'm saying this respectfully, but totally silly. Because the idea that these very vital, active freshmen are just sitting around on campus is just silly. They're constantly on the move, constantly going places. And yes, they do socialize with people who are older, who do have cars on campus. They're constantly going out. They're all over town and God bless them. They're patronizing our businesses. They bring life to our community. Some of them even live on my street here. I love them. They're great, okay? But to say that they stay in one park. And they're gonna, they're gonna be on campus and are not gonna get in cars and are not gonna go places. It's absolutely silly. Simple, simple truth is, the more students you have. And the more cars you have, the more traffic you're gonna have. Simple as that. The university's been expanded. It's gonna continue to expand. Yes, you have limited land, but somehow you've been able to squeeze every little bit out of that land and keep building and building. So the traffic will increase. The other thing that concerns me about this is I'm a little worried about, about the visuals. Um, because it is up on a hill. And the comment was made, well, Jewish Home was four stories and this is only three, so it's not even, you know. It's, it's not even having as big an impact. That's not true, because you're replacing a flat-roofed building that was four-story. Which a Gothic building, granted, very beautiful building, Gothic-style building with a very, very steeped pitch roof. On a hill near Jefferson Street, and that's gonna loom over the neighborhood. It's definitely, uh. I wanna make one final point. More and more students now are walking between um. That area of Park Avenue and Jefferson Street down to the new campus where General Electric is. I've seen them walking. My heart is in my throat all the time when I see them walking, because there are no sidewalks on Jefferson Street. It's a very steep hill and the cars do not slow down and they can't see what's going on. And I think it's about time, if we're gonna keep building and building and building and expanding this campus. A sidewalk needs to be built that goes along the entire length of Jefferson Street. Connecting the Park Avenue campus with the west campus on the other side of Eastern Turnpike. That should be a requirement for any further development of that property. The university should foot the bill. For a sidewalk for the safety of its students and other people in the neighborhood. The least you can do to alleviate the traffic problem and the dangerous conditions being created by this development of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glucci.
Mr. Chair, next we have Bethel Rooney.
Can I have a minute? Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, my name is Bethel Rooney and I live at eighty-five Weeping Willow Lane in Fairfield. Um, my husband and I submitted written comments uh, earlier today, so I hope you have received those. I'd like to say all. Um, that, you know, there's been comments about um, Sacred Heart having been good for the town of Fairfield. And that may well be. I think also that we have to say that Fairfield has been very good to Sacred Heart. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my screen has gone blank, but that's all right. Okay. Um, with regard to the requested amendments of the zoning regulations. Residence Three District regulations restrict the total lot coverage of buildings and structures to fifteen percent of the area of the lot. And total floor cover to thirty percent of the area of the lot. This commission recently amended those regulations to exclude parking structures. From the lot and floor coverage calculations for colleges and universities in R-three districts. In practical effect, that amendment benefits only Sacred Heart. Now Sacred Heart asks this commission to amend the R-three regulations further. By allowing colleges and universities to have lot coverage of twenty percent. And floor coverage of forty percent of the area of the lot, not including parking structures. Again, the requested amendment would benefit only Sacred Heart. Creating the proposed amendment is making special rules to benefit one and only one property owner. Moreover, it would be inconsistent with the town's comprehensive zoning plan. The R-three district is primarily for single-family homes on lots of at least twenty thousand square feet. Nonprofit colleges and universities are allowed with a special exception. But they are supposed to comply with the R-three regulations. Sacred Heart has been chipping away at this requirement for years. But it is time for the erosion to end. Its plans are overly ambitious. Its campus is covered with buildings and other structures now, to say nothing about the many parking lots, driveways, and walkways on it. Its desire to build everything shown on its master plan is irrelevant. It should not be permitted to exceed the generous lot and floor coverages that it already is allowed. The Town Plan of Conservation and Development states. In dealing with the Stratfield area, some institutional uses have developed in the Jefferson Street area. The General Electric corporate headquarters, convalescent facilities, High Stool, University. And Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course are naturally bounded, which should prevent over-expansion of these uses. Any future development of this area should be sensitive to the residential uses within this neighborhood. Sacred Heart's use already has been expanded to the former sites of the Jewish Home and General Electric. And its use is much more intense than either of those institutions were. Now it wants to intensify its use even further. By seeking the requested amendment, Sacred Heart is asking this commission to disregard the comprehensive plan revealed in the existing zoning regulations. To ignore the guidance of the P O C D. And to further disturb the surrounding residential area. I urge this commission to deny the proposed amendment. With respect to the special exception request. Sacred Heart proposes to construct a complex consisting of two forty-eight-foot dormitories. And a two-story parking deck on a steep hill on the south side of Jefferson Street. The parking structure will face Jefferson Street. The entire complex will be highly visible from Jefferson Street and the residential neighbor that joins it. Sacred Heart apparently has not submitted any comprehensive drawings of the proposed complex from the Jefferson Street perspective. I saw a certain uh. Images today uh, that were put on by Sacred Heart, which were not in the uh, the file. Uh, at Town Hall, but I still have not seen any rendering from the Jefferson Street perspective. Showing the elevations of the two-story parking structure and then of the forty-eight uh, foot. Uh, dormitories that are proposed. Moreover, Sacred Heart does not seem to intend to plant any trees or otherwise landscape the land between the complex and Jefferson Street. Such drawings uh, of the parking lot and the dormitories from the Jefferson Street perspective. And a landscape plan for the north side, in other words, the Jefferson Street side. Should be required before this application is considered. Appropriate screening should be required, even if it would necessitate the revision of building plans. Sacred Heart has stated that four hundred and eighty-four students are expected to live in the two dormitories. No doubt there will be other people working and possibly living there. Sacred Heart says that these buildings will house freshmen. That freshmen are not allowed to have cars and that they will use shuttle buses to travel off-campus. However, Sacred Heart also states that the two hundred and nineteen parking spaces in the parking structure. Are specifically for the use of these dormitories. That is on page one of the February second Odyssey and Hanover Letter. Obviously, Sacred Heart expects a substantial number of people to be driving to and frog these residence halls. Moreover, with respect to freshman occupancy, Sacred Heart may change the population of these buildings. And the rules governing that population at any time. And I believe there was testimony from a Sacred Heart employee uh, tonight, that in fact, freshmen are required. To live on the dormitory in any case. So these dormitories would not take uh, students living off-campus and put them onto the campus. Despite the foregoing, Sacred Heart has not provided a comprehensive traffic report. With current traffic counts, predicted changes, and analyses. So that this commission can determine the impact. That the proposed facilities would have on the already heavy traffic in the area. Such a report should be required before this application is considered. Pursuant to section twenty-seven of the zoning regulations. To grant a special exception, this commission must first determine, among other matters. That the proposal, including the size and location of buildings and structures. Is in harmony with and conforms to appropriate and orderly development of the neighborhood. And does not impair the value of adjacent property. The streets serving the proposed use are adequate to carry prospective traffic. And the proposal is in conformity with the master plan of the town, now known as the Plan of Conservation and Development. Sacred Heart has failed to provide this commission with the necessary information. To determine the effect of the proposed complex on traffic in the area. In addition, the placement of the excessively high dormitories and the huge parking structure on a hill. Close to Jefferson Street is too intrusive on the adjacent residential neighborhood and not in harmony with it. They would impair property values. Moreover, for the reasons that I've already given, the proposal is not in conformity with the P O C D. It appears that the proposed complex would cause Sacred Heart to exceed the existing lot and floor coverage regulations. If so, it should be denied on that basis. If the proposed complex would not cause Sacred Heart to exceed the lot and floor coverage regulations. It should be denied for the other reasons that I've already stated. Would ask that this hearing, including the public comment uh, session be uh, continued. So that Sacred Heart uh, submit a traffic, a real traffic report. And renderings from the Jefferson Street perspective, so that the public can comment on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rooney.
I don't see any of you, so.
That's okay. Uh, we've hit our, our curfew at ten o'clock. Um, so I will leave this hearing open. It'll be continued to the next. I assume Mr. went the next date, or is that to be determined?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, it would be my uh, intention to continue this to our next date, which would be two weeks from tonight on the twenty-second. Um, I will confirm that with Mr. Fitzpatrick tomorrow, but uh, that would be our uh, desire. But uh, that would be the game plan unless we publish, uh, it would be at a later date.
Okay. Attorney Fitzpatrick again. Uh, Attorney Fitzpatrick, anything else? You're on mute, but I saw you shake your head, so I'm gonna assume it's a no.
Nothing else at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I'll leave this hearing open, um, but we'll close the meeting tonight.
Maybe just make one last comment. Um, could the zoning board uh, be a little more timely with the mailing? I just got the notification today that this uh, that this meeting was, was taking place. So, you know, if they could just try to be a little more uh. You, you know, more uh. Timely to give people better time to, to, to plan, because I didn't have that much time to plan, you know, for uh, for this.
Understood, Mr. Hour. I don't, uh, I'll double, I'll check with staff about noticing requirements, but as of right now, you're, everybody's on notice. That we'll see everybody in two weeks to continue and finish this hearing.
Of course, I understand that.
No, I understand. So, I appreciate um, everybody's time. Have a good evening. We'll see everybody two weeks from now.